Director of Order, this is the Board of Selectmen's meeting for Tuesday evening, January 22nd, 2013. The unusual backdrop means that we're in the community room in the police station here in Redding. Our agenda, we're going to start with as brief as possible, I think, selectmen's reports and comments. We'll take any public comment that's here. I'm not sure whether the town manager or assistant town manager have any announcements for us this evening. Once we conclude that, we're going ahead with a discussion of special town meeting, Article Six, which is the library project. We're joined for that discussion this evening by the Finance Committee and by the Library Board of Trustees. At the conclusion of that discussion at about 7:30 or so, we'll resume our fiscal year 2014 budget discussions. We'll hear tonight from the library, the police, and dispatch, fire, and emergency services, public works. We'll discuss debt and capital and enterprise fund. At about nine o'clock, we will review the upcoming special town meeting warrant, and at that point, the board will decide whether to take positions on various articles or not. So with that, do...
Mr. Chairman, may I call the Board of Trustees, the library's director?
Certainly. Thank you. Do any of my colleagues have anything this evening? Anyone else? And with that, then, a lot of people in the room, see if there's brief public comment. Yeah, yeah, Phil?
Hi, Phil Brown, Precinct Date, Treeback Road. I'm here with a simple question to the Board of Selectmen. According to the charter, the Board of Selectmen shall cause laws and orders of the government of the town to be enforced. That's out of Section 3.2. Section 2-12 of the charter states, "The Finance Committee shall report its findings, approval or disapproval on articles involving expenditures of funds for the warrant in writing at least seven days prior to the town meeting." Are you going to enforce that or not? You said keep it simple, and that's about as simple as it gets.
Yeah.
And that's based, and that quite frankly, is based on a lawsuit down in Westwood, 1921. They failed to notify the residents of what was going on, therefore, the action could not come to the floor of town meeting, and I think this is the same situation. And let me do a little bit more on that. Had, and under the charter, the FinCom is allowed to change their mind, so all they had to do was make a no recommendation and put down there the reason for doing so. And every other article in the warrant has a recommendation. That one just passed. I'm asking you to make a decision, yes or no?
Pete?
The Town Council and the moderator have ruled on this numerous times, as brought up by Mr. Brown over the last number of years, and it's up to town meeting as to whether or not they take up the action of a particular article, whether or not it has a recommendation seven days ahead or not.
James?
So that, to that point, then this body should review a charter change. If a seven-day location isn't necessary, then there's no sense in having it in the charter.
All right. Any other public comment? Yes? Could you identify?
For member of this town meeting, member of Precinct Date, just a comment, I know we'll get into this when we talk about the library trustees and the library project. But you've asked, or the town is being asked, to vote on Article Six for a sum of money to be borrowed or whatever, and the warrant package that's gone out to all 192 members of town meeting in advance does not have a single dollar amount at all in any part of the backup, the background, or the discussion of the warrant article. There isn't a single dollar that's being put out. So if the expectation is that when we get to town meeting next Monday night, that we're going to have to sit there like sponges and absorb all of the financials and make a decision on it, I think there will be, I'm going to ask for motion to postpone town meeting at that point in time, because we're not being given even basic information to make an evaluation. So that's a comment, Mr. Chairman, but I think it's an observation of what information is being presented, zero.
I think that's sort of the point of the upcoming discussion this evening.
I agree.
We'll sort of take it from there. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am?
Yeah?
Yes. If you could just introduce yourself.
Oh, sure. Good evening, distinguished members of the board. My name's Darlene Mercer-Bruin. I live in Woburn. I'm also a Woburn city councillor. Some of you might remember me. Quite a few years back, we all rallied together, came together as a community, two communities, three in fact, to force Mass Highway to come up with some reasonable plans so they didn't take the homes in Redding, homes in Woburn. And working together, we were able to do that. I'm very proud to have served with all of you, and should we find the money in the state to move forward with those plans, I'm confident our communities are protected. But I'm here tonight to ask you to join me in another effort and to stand together with Woburn. I know that the issue of electronic billboards is going to be discussed here this evening. I want you to know that in Woburn, we have stood strong and tall against these electronic billboards, and certainly, we have plenty of opportunity where they could go, but our town, our city, has said no. As recently as two months ago, an article came to our city council for discussion. It never made it off the council floor, never even made it to committee. While we understand the temptation that these kinds of billboards can bring in terms of money, it is not the image that we want to project in Woburn. We also know that the lobby for these billboards is very strong and very powerful, but we ask you to join with us and say no, and do what we're doing. We're protecting our residents. We're protecting them from an area in the city, first of all, where we know we have issues with traffic and congestion. These signs are a distraction. They're ugly. This is not Vegas East. Woburn doesn't want them. I hope you'll say no as well. I'd also like you to consider something. I understand the temptation that they'll offer you with mitigation money. The definition, ladies and gentlemen, of mitigation is to become or make less intense, severe, or painful. Whatever little money you're going to get from these billboards, and I'm sure it will be over a short period of time, will not have any value to you if the property values in your town go down. It won't have any value to you at all, and I would suggest it is not fair to the people who live at Redding Commons, who are going to have to endure seeing this sign. To the people who travel through your city, they will see it. They will see it from miles away. If you doubt me, I ask you to go to Mont Bel Abb, Green Street, Uter Street, Hawthorne Street in Woburn. You can see the Stoneham sign for miles around. Had that sign been put in when we knew about it, or if we knew about it in Woburn, I can assure you, I would have been standing in front of the people in Stoneham, asking for the same thing. So again, I ask you, please, stand strong. Woburn will stand with you, and let's protect our residents from these unnecessary signs. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Chairman, I usually jump in on all the public, but I want to thank Darlene for coming forward. It's not often we get an elected official from a border city or town, and I did serve with Darlene five years on the task force, and I think what she speaks to is a very valid point she brought up, and I think it's important for all of us to consider as we discuss this later on this evening. Thank you, Darlene.
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you for joining us. Anyone else briefly? Yes, ma'am? Identify yourself.
I'm Attorney Darlene Bazarian. I'm a lifelong Redding resident, and I just wanted to address the same issue that Darlene, who's our neighbor, we're right on the border road, which is right next to Woburn, and say that we were able to gather, just on the short notice that we had, we just learned about this on Friday, about 200 signatures, and I'm sure we could get many more if we had more time to explain that. I don't think that it's a neighborhood issue as far as what's on facing the west side. I know that some people felt that we cared about this because it was on our side of town, but our side of town has really had a number of issues faced with it at the same time. We've been dealing with the highway expansion. It's affected our property values for years. For years, we've been dealing with this. When the town wanted to hook up to the MWRA, we got water pipes at the end of our street that we had to deal with, and we are constantly dealing with the traffic, the litter from Dunkin' Donuts. I mean, this is visual trash that they would be putting in our backyard. And what I found most stunning about this was the lack of notice that we got, when the biggest issue all of our neighbors had was no notice about the highway expansion. And the most frustrating thing, I think, is most of the neighbors I've lived with, you know, our whole lives, we've lived on this street. It's been a very tight community. I don't think anyone feels that the welcome to Redding sign is after our street. I don't feel that our interests have been adequately represented, but it is not just about us. I think that the light will be seen for miles. There's many other issues going on with this, but I think that the signatures that we got in such a short amount of time should warrant some of it. But Mass Highway themselves told us this was one of the most highly traversed interchanges, if not in the country, I believe, during when we had to sit through those house-taking meetings. And I remember them saying that it was a high rollover danger from 93 to 128. We hear the Jake Brake every night. We hear trucks going by, jamming on the brakes. There's a rollover sign that's enormous. I can't imagine putting up an eight-story-high electronic billboard would do anything to, you know, decrease safety hazards in that area, but I just wanted to say, this is what we were able to get in a short amount of time, and I'm sure we could get more. And I really appreciate it if you'd consider the issues facing our neighborhood.
Thank you. If there are any other public comment, we'll be returning to this issue at about nine o'clock, probably closer, somewhere between nine o'clock and 9:30 would be my guess, based on the existing hour. So if there are any more comments, we would take them at that time. I encourage people to hang around or come back after nine to participate in this particular discussion. Is there anything else that anybody wanted to comment on this evening? All right, great. So now we're going to move on to, because Pete, you didn't have anything else. Bob, you didn't have anything? No? Great. So we're going to move on with our discussion of special town meeting warrant, Article Six, which is the library project, and...
Just for background, the Finance Committee met with the library at their last meeting right before the warrant report was ready to be put out, and had some very good discussion on the library project. I think the Board of Selectmen has had a good discussion with the Library Board of Trustees. And the thing that the Finance Committee had asked for is the cost of project compared to one. So what is the baseline? And so we did arrange to have Richard Smith with the Architects to put together some information, test topics if that are available, and I think David is going to do a presentation. The intent of this is basically to respond to the FinCom's question of, you know, what is the cost of basically doing nothing or doing a more modest project? And I just caution, this is order of magnitude, because with the project that's being proposed by the library trustees, there is a plan, and that has been costed out. With these, there isn't a specific plan, so it's order of magnitude cost, but you shouldn't take those costs too literally, but certainly to the nearest hundred thousand, couple hundred thousand dollars. And I think the plan is, Richard's here, primarily to answer any questions that the FinCom or the Board of Selectmen or the Library Trustees have got.
Right. And David, do you want to come on?
Okay, thank you. Thank you, everyone. Again, our principal goal here tonight is to answer FinCom's specific question about the alternative assessment. We've talked numerous times about the project itself, and the interest of time, I propose not to necessarily go through all the history, but I'm delighted to answer questions and get into it, or whatever direction we want to go. And I think we've passed out to the two committees, anyone else, the cost proposals. And again, the costs for the proposed project, which is the one that the Board of Trustees endorses, is the one that was submitted with the state application, so the state of Massachusetts granted us $5.1 million towards the library project that we had submitted, which was essentially a renovation of the existing building, together with a small addition. And the combination of those two things would allow us to do many things, including bring the building into modern times, as well as enabling us to redesign the space and flow to both provide a little more safety and service levels to the community, as well as respond to the community's stated needs, which we derived through years of surveys and public input sessions, as well as, as part of this project back in 2008, 2009, retaining a program manager to help us design what a library should look like for the next 25, 30 years. So we had that program, then we engaged Mr. Smith to scope out what that would look like. And I do want to remind everyone that both the Board of Trustees and the Board of Selectmen, since we've presented at least three times in the last few years, we went through this process, we got estimates of these various options. We, as a board, were aiming towards, when you look at the numbers, you can see that directionally, the renovation and the addition gives you a lot more than just a basic renovation and upkeep. And directionally, the numbers were about the same in 2008, proportionally. Obviously, four or five years later, both costs have gone up, but in our view, the right answer remains the same, and we can talk about that in more detail. And I also, I'm assuming, but of course, I'm sure we will continue to talk about it, that the town believes that the library is a valuable asset. I hope that's a given for everyone, and also that you accept that the library is at the top of the list in terms of needing some very serious attention. That's what the Board of Selectmen's Municipal Building Committee concluded, that's what we've concluded, and that's what we've heard from the public. Obviously, if we get into an existential discussion about whether you should upgrade buildings, we can do that, too. I think this is the one that's next. So given that, the, basically, the project that we presented to the state, and we prepared these numbers a few years ago, and this is why we had to update them recently, was, you can think of in terms of construction costs, which is the hard costs of doing the actual work on the building, and then the so-called soft costs, which are the costs of temporary movements and contingencies, new furniture, and all the things that go with a building that is now a different building, all the fixtures and electrical equipment and all that. So what we presented to the state was the best numbers we had in 2009, I believe it was, 2010. And again, derived with the help of professionals, of course, and trying to meet the state allocation requirements as well as the town's needs. We submitted that in October, as I believe you're aware, we found out that we were granted the funding to get the state award. The state awarded us the grant last summer, but it wasn't funded yet, so only, so it's not really much until last October, at the end, we found out that we had the money. Therefore, it's time to go live. The state program comes with several stipulations. One is that you have to get a town to approve the proposed project within six months. So that is about June 30, I think, is the date that we have, after which the grant has lapsed, expires, and we are out of the running for probably the life of this program, which is probably another 10 years or so. That's one stipulation. The other stipulation is that in order to get the grant, you have to have some improvement to the library that the state deemed sufficient, and typically, that includes some expansion or some additional capabilities to the library, rather than just a fresh paint job and tighten up the bricks. Otherwise, we wouldn't have got the state application. I say that only because, as we talk about tweaking the design, if you tweak the design, you're not going to get to keep the state money, for the most part. There's a very small discretionary piece. So given that, what we concluded three, four years ago was the same thing. We should go for the state program, and we still conclude that today, but the construction costs now, as they've been updated frantically in the last few months, look to be about $10.1 million, and the soft costs with, to go along with that project, are about $4.8 million, which puts the total spend at about $4.9 million, of which the state will provide $5.1 million to us. So the town out of pocket for this project as proposed is $9.8 million. Now bear in mind that that includes the $4.8 million of soft costs, includes contingencies and some other things, which, once the project has become real and approved, of course, we hope to try and find some funding and endorsements and things like that. We may be able to chip that number away, and of course, we may not spend it all as well. But various folks have suggested that we should certainly get asked the town to approve what we think is the maximum, and then we'll manage as prudently as possible to make sure that we're well underlined, if possible. But we wouldn't want to go back twice when we're all up. That is my overall summary of doing what I said I wasn't going to do, which was give some background. Sorry. But we have a big crowd, and I know people are focused on that. So FinCom said, well, that's a great proposal, but what if we don't pursue that avenue? What if we need, what if we don't want to do that? What can we do? So, and again, I emphasize, we already looked at this. It's not like we just decided on this and have been blinded by this for years. We looked at these options, and they gradually made more sense, especially with the state program. However, we, a wide team of folks, town management facilities, library, some citizens, and some professionals, all came together and tried to quickly come up with what it would cost an alternative. I'm just taking my picture. Just want to smile. I'd hate to be like this. What if you didn't do that? What would you do? And, you know, so we went back, and there are a number of ways to get to that alternative, but with that group, they were able to, with Mr. Smith's help, generate a rough, as Peter said, bottoms-up comparison. It's important to understand the assumptions, however, you know, it's easily would cost millions just to address the building's basic envelope needs, fixing the brick work, fixing the leaking in the basement, fixing the electrical work, but I think unanimously, all of these individuals conclude, that would essentially be money poorly spent, because it wouldn't get you anything, and would probably only buy you a year or two in the building, and then would still be putting new things in. You know, the building's overdue on roof, on windows, on HVAC, and that is going to end up putting more millions in in very short order. So everyone's conclusion was, if we're going to do not the state project, we at least need to renovate this thing up to address the load needs on the floors, as well as all the other envelope work. And that's the renovation cost that you have in your sheet here. And unfortunately, what you find is that the construction cost for that, and this is very similar to the other project, the construction, the existing building is the expensive piece. The addition is really a fairly insignificant piece. The existing building is 100 years old, and it's served as a library for 50 years quaintly, but it's simply not designed for a library, and it's really run down. A lot of it's hidden, but it is, and we're going to have to impress it for a variety of reasons, putting safety, and it's just, you know, I'm hoping that we're beyond the discussion about whether we should address it or not, but we can talk to it. If we get into that, you're going to have to do many of the same things. You're going to have to do all the envelope work, so then you're in for millions, and then you're going to have to fix the loads and fix the flow inside of the building. What's sad about that is the construction costs are about $9.7 million, is our estimate. And I would also say you can get to that number in a variety of ways. This is the bottoms-up approach that this group did. I think if you look back at our old costs and gross them up for the inflation and the new construction cost estimates, it'd be about the same, which, in my view, also ratifies our decision earlier to go for the state approach. And we have to assume, if you're going to renovate the building, of course, you have roughly the same soft costs. You're still going to have to move out, you're still going to have to refurnish it and put all the new electricity in. The construction costs are just the hard building, which then gets you to an out-of-pocket for the town of about $9.7 million, plus the soft costs, so about $14.6 million, with no state funding. So now, so that option you're spending, the towns would need to spend a lot more to get a lot less. And again, from zero to this $9.7 construction, it doesn't seem like a worthwhile thing to do, for any reason. So, David, why don't I leave it at that? That was the conclusion of the working group, the library, the town, and citizens. And Ruth has a list of participants.
I have a list of the people who met twice and scribbled together, but it included some local architects and engineers and our facilities manager. I'm sorry, I don't have bazillion copies, but...
But this gets a, this is a little bit how you arrived at...
Yes.
A little bit of how you arrived with the figures.
Yes.
And Ruth, these folks on this list would more or less agree with the numbers?
Yes, the first meeting we had was a week ago to talk about the scope of what we were asked for from the Finance Committee, which was sort of, what is the renovations? And Peter and Bob were there, et cetera. And the second meeting was this morning, when we had the number from Peter Haffington Blacker, from the architects, about what the cost of the renovation was. We went over that number to ascertain what was included and what was not included. And we found out late this afternoon, really, that the $9.7 million number did not include the soft costs, which would include design and professional fees and contingency and all those things. So that's how we got there.
But to answer your question, I hope everyone on that list would agree that, I mean, they developed this number.
Yes.
I think there were two architects and an engineer in that working group, and their advice most strongly was, give the nature of the building, and that it is a 117-year-old building, that to carry a reasonable contingency of 15% is the prudent thing to do. If not all that money is needed to do the project as it's envisioned, then that's money that would not be spent, and we have a building project and not spent all the authorized money on them, and that money comes back to the town, and it's just not spent. So the point that reminds me is, the cost of doing full project as envisioned, or getting the best potential out of the existing building and the existing footprint, is virtually the same dollar. But what you get is, you get state aid in one instance, you don't get state aid in the other instance. The state will not give us the grant to get the existing footprint of the building and upgrade it. So the cost to the taxpayer is virtually the same, but you don't get the enhancements to the building, and therefore, enhancements to the library program that you would if the full project is done.
Anybody else from the trustees like to add any comments at this point? There'll be opportunities for some discussions there. If I could just ask the board first, then I'll kind of find somebody. Yeah, Rick?
I have two questions. Thank you for these numbers. They're useful, but my question is, Ruth, you had this list of folks who helped put together the content of what a renovation might include. The numbers themselves, is that Richard's group, or was that, how did you come up with a sense of...
The numbers came out of a review with the Bogart cost estimator, correct me if I'm wrong. professional construction cost estimators, who did the original estimate and went through and talked through the scope with the ultimate.
Okay. And then, my next question was, since that Bogart and Associates had done the original estimate, I think, I guess the change between two thousand eight and now, I guess maybe a little more detail, I guess, why that number changed. Is it just a product of time?
Yeah, the, the, this is the full estimate. If you can describe the three pages of exact pricing for things. And the, if you don't mind, I'll answer. The construction cost, the hard cost, is about eight hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And the contingency was very, very low estimated. And the feeling was that at the time, we just got into this recession and people were, market conditions were quite different and the construction market was really cold. So the, the contingency was placed very, very low. And when it was reviewed this November, alarms went off and the contingency was, was adjusted so that the project could actually be done. And that was almost a million dollars that we changed there. And the other cost that was underestimated initially, we believe it was underestimated, was the building and the moving and temporary quarters and storage. The plan is to put two-thirds of the library's collections into storage and we got an exact estimate for what it would cost to move and store. And we have better estimates now, we believe, on temporary quarters for eighteen months. So that was adjusted.
I've actually gone out and talked to landlords, gotten to that perspective, to that point of, feel more comfortable in terms of the level of cost there.
I would add that in terms of what was done specifically on this estimate, the professional cost estimator has access to cost databases and his own experience and they're constantly updating their numbers, the unit costs and so on. Essentially, they did rerun the quantities that had before, but with current values to derive the new estimate. And since 2010, what we've seen is that there's been a lot of shakeout in the construction industry. In 2010, there were a lot of people working around very hard for work. A lot of those people aren't in business anymore. So the construction industry was now shrunken to meet the demand in response to reduced demand. People who are left, we have better prices and profit margins than before two years ago.
So those construction and market conditions changed, the prices from then till now. So at the end, in the report we have tonight, there's escalation costs of five, five and four percent in the upcoming years. Do you feel those are adequate to capture whatever growth?
It's always crystal ball gazing.
Yeah.
But it's, I think our best shot, the people like Bogart or the people who probably have the best feel for how the market's going.
May I, may I also point out the, I mean, this proposal was developed in great part to apply for the state program. I mean, you know, it was a very detailed bottoms-up number with the best guess at the time. I imagine they ran it through their, their estimator at the time and they came out with these numbers. But the, given that the fairly small change in the construction costs, the, the state reimbursement is targeted mostly at construction costs. So in other words, the purpose of the numbers was to get the state grant. We got the state grant and I don't imagine that we gave much up, if any, because of the change in the numbers. It's unfortunate because it comes to the town's, the town's pocket, but we didn't miss out on state money, so I think it's important to realize that.
Excuse me, I think the, the three building professionals and actually our, our facilities managers who was part of the working group agreed that the order reminded to of the construction cost increases from two thousand to the current were the appropriate level of cost increase.
Okay, thank you.
Ruth, did I, maybe I misheard, did I understand you to say that in the original estimate, that the cost of relocation and storage were used, but in the current estimate, it's a cost of relocation and operating, so that there's a, did I miss here?
The original estimate for the relocation and temporary quarters was very, very low. Combined, it was about a hundred and sixty thousand. And we now know that the move itself is a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars and that temporary quarters, we're estimating at four hundred thousand dollars.
But she wasn't suggesting that there was operating costs in this number?
It's purely a storage number, a fine storage number.
Yeah.
And then with, with regard to what's on the board up here, the nine point seven million, I don't want to start a food fight, but is, the bulleted list that's on page three or four of the handout, is, has that been articulated beneath to show the, the breakout of that nine point seven, is it relates to the several items? Yeah, right there. Is that, is that itself, you've got, you've got a bogey there of seven and a half million. Is that broken out by task or by, by scope?
Well, that, that is the, the elements that you see in the list directly above it, which is essentially the, the, the dotting and rehabilitation of the existing building and addressing the code, the building systems, concerns that exist there, the floor loading issues, the seismic issues. It is, as we said, a ballpark number, but it supports fairly well with what we may add from, from the estimate of the original work, because the scope within the building doesn't really have changed that much.
I guess what I'm getting at is, it's, it's all knotted together. I understand scope issues where doing task A may relieve the need to do some of scope B and therefore, the whole may be greater than the sum of the parts. But is it, is it possible to break that up into smaller pieces than the seven and a half million? Is there any work that's been done either earlier or as a result of, leading into tonight's meeting, that would give us more granularity to that seven and a half?
This probably, I think of what you're referring to is, that was part of the.
Yeah.
And that's probably what you're asking.
Yeah, so I don't have.
Yeah, I, I think a lot of these are repeats of the work that was in the original project and the detailed cost for the individual items is there. I, I would just caution that the way the estimate is done is by construction materials categories rather than by area ability.
By scope, right.
So you have to, you have to think about it that way. But the fact remains that we've got building systems replacements throughout and finishes being replaced throughout. And the issue of the stairs creating safety risks, the issue of the elevators that doesn't be born to ADA now. So assuming that all of those are going to be addressed, we're going to have a cost that's not terribly different from the cost that was derived for the renovation portion of the estimate.
So I get the thought, with being teed up tonight, and it's the same thing we heard in the FinCom meeting a few weeks ago, is this project is well-sized, appropriate scope, it's, the renovation task is broadly net of the state aid, the same impact of renting. My thought, however, is it's never a question of do it or not, it's always, we've got many mouths to feed. And the question is, can you, can you absorb the increases in this task in the light of all that the town's being asked to shoulder in the coming years? And that gets to my question of, if you had the original funding and, and I understand that the, the state aid would no longer be available, how would you, is there a way to parcel that up or break that up in a way that lets you say, for some fixed sum of money, what could you go out of your shopping list and afford?
Well, essentially what you're saying is, what you want to do is back the five million dollars out of the budget you have now and say, what can we do with what's left? And given that the addition itself was, I think, with the two and a half million in the markup, that means now you've got to also try to find a way to take another two and a half million out of the rest of the project just to break even. But at the end of the day, you're not going to have any improvement to library service, you may have a building that's in better shape. But in fact, there are going to have to be compromises to the library service because we've got the issues of ADA and so on, require replanning, it's going to reduce stack capacity within the building, just a lot of things that we're going to be able to solve by having the addition can't be solved without the addition. So we're going to rate a GM on that building program into a space that's effectively smaller and less efficient.
I'm just struggling with the all or nothing proposition of, of do the entire project because it's, and no question, it's, if you had, if spending, if funding weren't the issue, you'd argue that it's the best use of your dollar. Funding's always the issue. And so the question is, how do you deal with the constraints, as you used the word earlier, enter in the environment where we find ourselves with other mouths and other hands out asking for funding in one form or another? Is there a way to tease this apart and try to find some alternative? And what's presented here tonight, it's hard for me to do that. I can go through the, the study, but as you say, it's really oriented against material costs, not necessarily against scope.
I, I, I think it's important to, again, look back, I mean, you know, we, we, early on, two thousand eight, we, we looked at three or four options, we presented to the Board of Selectment numerous times. Here are the options we're looking at. Do nothing, renovation, renovation in addition. That was in two thousand and eight. We recommended this based on the estimates at the time. We didn't, hadn't done this level of breakdown at the time, but they were, the, the renovation was in the eighty to ninety percent range of the renovation in addition. It seemed like we should go in that direction. Then in two thousand nine, the state program was announced. We decided, let's pursue that. And by the way, we presented it to Board of Selectment and Town Meeting numerous times every step of the way. This is what we're doing. Obviously, we didn't present and ask for funding at the time because, but we did develop that one detailed set of expenses to present to the state as required. No one, we didn't think it was a proven use of resources to always carry a parallel column so that we'd ultimately have a comparison, nor did anyone ask us to, among all these meetings and presentations. The state approved our program and, and now we have it. And, and we only found out two months ago, right? So I, I just, I, I hear what you're saying, but to develop a detailed, you know, down to the, the ten thousand dollar component for an alternative, I think the town and all of its governance bodies said, let's not pursue that, let's pursue this other option. We've done the best we can in a short amount of time, but in my view, it, it provides you directionally what you need, what you need to do. You know, if we say, we can't do the state fund, we can't afford nine million, we can only afford six for the library, then I think what you're hearing from Richard is, that's a total rethink, because, you know, three or four million probably isn't worth doing and nine million is really the only thing that you, if you're going to break it open, you need to go that direction. So I just, I feel like we've, we've looked at this for years and that's why I'm a little surprised we're going through it in such detail.
And the, the other caution I would make is that you need to make sure with a project that you're doing everything in the project that you need to do. By that, I don't mean to be lavish, but by that I also mean, let's not fool ourselves that the library, when we did it, was a million dollars in nineteen eighty-three and within a year, we put new roof on the building, goes another hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And within five or six years, we put the HVAC system in, there's another three hundred thousand dollars. And we never replaced the gutters and that's part of the problem with the building now, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So I think the, the concept here is to build a building that will have a functional life of at least twenty years, the library, and a, a useful life of a building that's at least fifty. And I think that's most proven use of, of resources. As hard as it is to, you know, plenty up with that money to start with, that's certainly the best long-term solution.
Thank you. Anyone else from the board? FinCom?
I, I kind of look at this as, and, and I appreciate that you guys have been with it, with this project for so long and it's very clear that we're, that we're past, you know, the, the just the renovations thing. I, I appreciate all the work that's been going on for so long. I, I think the reality is, we're not past it yet, we're very much. Once we, once we go to town meeting, the voters will figure out whether we're past it. But I think a couple of things come to mind, is one is that, that if we opt not to take the, the larger project, then we are somewhat locked in in terms of timeframe as well as size and makeup of the project. We are somewhat locked in because of the state rules. So right there, we, we are faced with having to make a decision with the best information we have available, because we don't have the luxury of our own timeframe, the state has its own timeframe that they put on us. But I, but I kind of view this as the, this building has been known for some time to needing a lot of attention and that needs money. And we could go about the way we normally do it, which is putting incremental money One of the, and it would also, I'm sure that we could do it for less than nine million because we can opt not to do certain things. And so we could bring the number down. But the fundamental, the structural, some, there's, it's my understanding, there's some fundamental things that are problematic with this building. It's old. And if you, if you want a building that you don't have to keep incrementally putting money into continuously, you have to invest in it. That goes with any of the buildings we've done, we've, we've, we've got. And right now, we're sitting very pretty in the eyes of anybody buying real estate on the, on the quality of our facilities and that helps our real estate values very well. But I think one of, one of the things you have to look at is, those incremental improvements, if not funded by the state, are going to come out of our budget. And it would have to come out of capital or another override. If you take, if you try to incrementally take it out of capital, where, what you'd be going against is a budget that's already straining. It has been straining the last four or five years. We've been going backwards because we have not been able to increase at the rates to keep up. So we've been reducing. So you would be going up against that. And I don't even want to guess what Congress is trickle, going to trickle down at us in the same time period, but I have a feeling they're not going to get us more money. So I, so I, I view this as a, as a, we're not going to have perfect information. The information we do have though, says that, that we're going to, we're going to have to invest millions over the next few years, even if we don't go with the state, against a budget that's already, operating budget that's already tight. I, I, I'm sure we could do it for less than your nine million dollar figure, again, by leaving off certain things, but I think we still have a significant investment in that building to be made. And, and in, in my mind, it, it makes tremendous sense to do it at once, get that building to where it's in shape for the next fifty years and not incrementally do it and strain an already strained operating budget. That's a town value though. The benefits of this, yeah, to, to, to have an override, it's very much a town value to do this, but financially, you're going to pay for a great deal of this either way. So the incremental difference that I see townspeople paying, I think is, in my mind, well worth the value to bring that facility as an asset to date.
Thank you. FinCom?
No, I, I, I agree. It's, I know the last, since I've been on the finance committee for five, six years, it seems like every year, there is, something comes up at an emergency capacity, we've had to put money into the library. I think the last meeting, I don't know if you had a chance to put some of those numbers together, what we voted for, for stuff that just broke and just we had to, it wasn't, it wasn't a planned capital expense that we want to do this to fix the library, it was, guys, you have to make an emergency meeting because you have to vote because we've got to put money to fix the library. I don't know what that all has added up to, but my guess is, in an old building, that's not going to disappear. And that's, and that's not going to be something that we're going to be able to plan for, even if we wanted to put in sort of a scaled-down version of renovating the library that might not cost nine million. library that might not cost nine million. I mean, even that's planned. The stuff that happens that, you know, that we need to fix on an emergency basis, you know, the stacks coming off of the walls or the, the loads off of the floors that, that, you know, could go, you know, that's going to be where, that's going to basically force us to either spend free cash or do something at the expense of something else. In my mind, it's just fiscally prudent that we have an opportunity to, to get resources from the state, which by the way, it's, I, I, I just want to remind people, this isn't the state giving the town of Reading five million dollars to fix our library. Everybody in Reading pays state income taxes. That's money that we're already paying to the state that's coming back. And if you think about what we as a community get in services, whether it be local aid or chapter seventy or road money or things like that versus what we pay as individual businesses, as homeowners, as taxpayers, this isn't the state giving us a gift. This is our taxpayer money coming back to Reading. And while I am not enamored of sort of kind of shoehorned into a process where we have to make decisions in a relatively quick manner because that's the guidelines for this particular grant, I feel that this project has been vetted. I've gone to many meetings myself over the years where these options have been discussed and, and I think it's pretty clear that folks, you know, will, voters will, you know, at election will tell whether or not this is something that they want to pony up for, for the money, but for the money that they're going to have to pay. But I just don't want to, you know, I, I don't want to leave the notion that, well, the state is giving us money. This is money, our money coming back to work for us. And to leave that on the table, you know, I just think is, is something that, you know, in this environment, we're never going to get there. So if it, you know, even if these numbers are not, and I know you guys had it put together really quickly, and I also do appreciate the fact that we didn't run a dual spreadsheet of what are we going to do if we don't get the grant? We're really focused on getting the grant. It's clear the cost of doing nothing is not zero. It's significant. And I, I would rather take the time to do it right. We've had the same discussion every time we did, every time this has come up, whether it be a new school building or a new high school, fixing up barrows, the, the, the common theme was, we may only get one chance at this, let's do it right. And so, you know, the trustees have done a great job of sort of putting this together and winning the grant. There's a lot of communities that didn't win the grant. There are a lot of communities that won the grant but couldn't put the coalition of folks in their town together to scrape up, you know, their share of the money. The fact that we're even talking about this today is a testament to how well everybody here works together and just to, and to use that as a springboard to really get a library that, you know, that will survive until the end, you know, well into the century. Because I, I don't want to, in July, get called back from vacation because Bob puts out an email that says, you know, the roof is leaking again and now we need an emergency thing.
Elevator's broken.
Right. Because that's what's happened every year and that, you know, you can never, you can never predict what's going to happen. But I guarantee, if we don't do anything or if we don't do anything to really address the needs of this building, that's what we're going to be going, you know, in perpetuity. And we have a chance to do it right. So I'm, I think that this is something that ultimately the voters will decide, but it's something that we should feel real proud of.
Just to follow up, I just started, you know, thank you. I was one of the ones clearly asking for more information last, last meeting, so I appreciate the, the additional information and it really echoed those thoughts that, yeah, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think everyone could argue and make the point that at least on the back page, the, sorry, seven, you know, the seven and a half million, there's room to play there. That's where we can, we can trade off, but if I'm reading it correctly, the million three is what needs to be done to, not jokingly, but keep the building from falling out. And, okay, maybe there's some wiggle room in the soft cost, but I assume any level of renovation, even if we scale back to seven and a half, is going to take close to the same amount of time. So that seems like a reasonable estimate there. You're, you're very quickly catching up to the nine point seven, having done nothing. And that was what I was trying to get in order of magnitude last, last meeting, so I appreciate, I appreciate that.
I think the other thing to keep in mind is, if you do this incrementally, you're going to hit a number, and I don't know what that number is, Richard might know or be able to give you better information, I am, where you've got to do it all or you do nothing. We faced that at Killam School where we actually had a state grant to do the roof from the windows and we had to decide not to do the windows because we were investing enough money in the building that it hit a thirty percent threshold and triggered much more extensive work in, in a year. And so that will happen in this building too, if you try to do things incrementally. I'm not sure what that number is, where it is, but that will happen. So you'll, you'll be required to either do nothing or you'll be required to do.
Yeah, I, and, and we are, we are dealing with somewhat rough numbers here. We have hired large teams of experts with independent opinions. But it, but even if I was to lop off a third of this cost because, because we could do less or we could do, do it less expensively or simply have the project contain less, my reasoning is, is that, is that we, for that incremental difference, you know, whether it's three or four million versus the larger project, an investment, an additional investment of that amount gets you, and gets you, by going to the state project, state-funded project, gets you a project that I think solves all the problems and sets you up for, for many years to come, minimizes the go-forward investment in the building as well. I think it probably stands as a, something real estate agents will talk about whenever somebody's buying a, a property as well and see investment in the library, it's investment in education. And I think that helps all our property values. I personally think that if they talk it up enough, that I might just make more than I'm investing in the library through, through debt service. But, so I, 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 I have a little bit of a problem with the lack of exactness of figures, but that's life. We, we only have so much to deal with, so much time to deal with. So in my mind, they're, they're understandable enough that, that there's a reasonable decision to be made.
Any other questions?
So just to Mr. Dan Magnus' point earlier, if we were to go forward with this, are we talking about the fourteen million and seventy-six? Is that the number that will go in front of town meeting?
Yes.
Okay. And just another clarification, between the January fourth poverty estimate and the one that you provided today, there's a hundred and sixty thousand dollar increase in renovation in three weeks. So i- is that something that is, was that a one-time update of some number or?
Yes, I think the town manager can talk about that.
Well, one of the, one of the advantages to having gone through this exercise is they were able to actually look at the, the new construction cost estimates and the older ones and found that they hadn't accounted for replacement of the roof. So I just want to make sure that, you know, if we spend fourteen point something million dollars, that we have a new roof on the building and that we don't have to go back to town meeting a year later and say, we need a new roof. So that's what that figure.
Yeah, James.
Just to that point, I'm a little concerned. Don't get me wrong, I think this is an excellent project. I think we should move forward with this project. It is a gem. It's a major asset to town of Reading. What I'm more concerned about is our lack of methodology, our lack of process, that you have a major renovation and you don't remember to put the new roof on, which was one of the major things years ago. Now, again, I, I'm not critical of the project, but I'm critical of our sloppiness, which is costing every taxpayer running a lot of money. Three million dollar change over time, and I won't say what, how that change occurred, I have my opinion and others have theirs, is roughly forty dollars per household. And some may slop it off and say, well, it's just another latte a week. Well, I'm sorry, if you talk to probably twenty percent of our residents who are on fixed incomes, that's not a latte. That's a decision of, do I buy as much of my groceries as I normally do? Do I turn my heat from sixty-five now down to sixty-one? And I'm not making this up. If you, if you don't believe me, do me a favor. Steve Goldie joins the seniors every other, Thursday every month. Please do, come down to senior center and have lunch with them. And you ask them their opinion of what, you know, how, how do you feel about the taxes and, and hey, we have this great project, but it's going to cost you another fifty dollars a, a year. So again, this is an excellent project, but I don't want us, I, I think we've been a little callous or, or carefree about how we, we justify numbers and, and just put these numbers out there, oh, well, it's just this. We do this every year of, well, you know, it's only twenty dollars additional to, per household, of course, they can absorb it. When do we stop being able to absorb it? And which, by the way, all the seniors who no longer can afford to stay in their home, and that's by the way, another flip side of why we put it in the nurse advocacy, so people can age in their own homes to the expense of a town of twenty, thirty thousand dollars a year, because it makes sense. We want our seniors to be able to age at home. They no longer can afford it. So if our housing is flipping faster than what we normally predict, well, now we have a, a problem on the school side because every household will have on a minimum of two children per household. So when we look at our finances and the financial budget on an annual basis, it needs to be a holistic view. But, and I'm sorry, I was, I was good until I heard, oh, well, it went up because we forgot the roof.
Can I respond, please, James? And I, I apologize for bringing it up, but we did have a problem three years ago with project management, frankly. We had a good firm and we had an individual who had family crisis and Peter and I met with his supervisor and went through things, but that's where the ball got dropped and we have not had project management since then. We haven't had the money to retain a project manager since then. And when we got the grant, when we got the notice of the grant, our town manager said we quickly need to get some new cost estimates because what we had was so old. And that's sort of where the gap is. I mean, I think it's an unfortunate, real unfortunate thing to have to, but I believe that it's fair enough to present that to you, that this was.
No, absolutely.
You know, and, and individuals oversight and of course, the rest of us are sitting here going through a mechanical description, thirty pages long. And frankly, you know, struggling to decipher it.
James, I think the important thing is to be sensitive, obviously, to the impact on the property owners because ultimately, they're going to either approve it or not. You have to be sensitive to that, but also to get it right. And I think that through the passage of time and escalation of prices, everybody, I think, understands that. I think we've gotten some broader input from the community through this working group in terms of things like contingencies and to make sure that we get that right. And the issue with the contingencies is, you know, Vicki was sort of lecturing to her today, I think, is the money that you ask for is for the project that we expect. And just because we don't need to spend all the contingencies, and I hope we're in that position, that doesn't mean that we go out and spend it. That means that money is saved and that goes back to, to taxpayers. And, you know, honestly, you know, when, when they came up with a temporary relocation figure that was in the base budget, until we went out and started shopping for what space would cost us for eighteen months, hopefully only eighteen months, I didn't have a really good picture of that. And this isn't going out and replicating thirty thousand square feet for the library in temporary space. This is going out and replicating probably ten thousand square feet. So just give me the library down to ten thousand square feet for a year and a half, make the best we can with that and then we'll get to the new facility. But I certainly have a much better feeling for the numbers now than three months ago when we got the state.
I, I appreciate that. Again, I'm not trying to attack that, but the numbers forever changing. And when I see, when I see a moving target.
Yep.
I'm concerned that either we truly don't have the expertise in, which is fine, right? I mean, let's do it right. If hiring a professional firm to do it right, maybe, right? And if we can't do that, to what extent, you know, we don't want to be sitting in town meeting, and the schools have been hit by this from various groups of, okay, you're coming to us for the Killam, you dare not be coming back for us again, like the whole building improvements. And they get attacked every time. I don't want to see the library have to go through that every year as well.
And I think everybody agrees with that.
Thank you. I was one of the Finance Committee members who requested this information and I want to thank you very much for the work that it went into it. I, thank you. I do think it was critical in helping to make a decision and I imagine the work that you did at the last minute was a lot, so I appreciate it and I'm thankful for it. I am concerned, not about the library, because I very much agree with my colleagues, particularly seeing these numbers, while they're, I won't repeat everyone's argument, I'm just in agreement with what's been already said. I am a little bit concerned about process going forward, not on the library, but on other capital projects, that when, when we are talking debt exclusions, when we are talking about going to taxpayers and saying, here's the project and here's what we would like to do, that we don't lose focus of, here are the options we explored and they were fully vetted and here are the pros and here are the cons, qualitative and quantitative analysis, so that, I think that big picture makes these decisions a lot more helpful. And I think that's on us as a Finance Committee and on the Board of Selectment as well, to make sure that that is being done throughout the process. So, but thank you very much.
Anything else from Ben, Tom?
To James' point, in the unfortunate circumstance where there's other, other discrepancies or variations noted, how would that be presented after tonight? Would that be within the four corners of what's being discussed today?
Well, it's your question, so we can go out to bid and.
No, we find in, in a week's time, there's another X, X thousand, in the unfortunates or unlikely circumstance, is that within the four corners of what we discussed tonight?
Yes, but we, you know, I think the sense is that with fifteen percent project contingency that we ought to be able to cover any eventual.
The follow-up is, there's been some discussion about the discretionary room that the project has to stay within the state's subsidy range. How is that denominated? Is it in dollars of scope? Is it in square foot of building? How is that determined?
Square footage program.
And what is the parameter, what's the threshold that trips the?
Ah, well, let's see. We, we have a program over this. I think we, we had worked on that a bit and don't have that right in front of me at the moment, but we had actually successfully whittled down the number from what the, the library had hired an independent library programmer to develop, it was an analysis of the twenty-year needs and then using those to develop the set of spatial requirements. And part of the design process is translating the words and spreadsheets there into a physical plan. And part of the process that we worked through on that was to do an analysis of that and look at square footage requirements, look at what happened and we laid it out. And I think we were able to ratchet the number down from what the programmer, which we sell.
So the threshold is between what the programmer says and what the design is to be. It's not the design versus as built or.
Right, yeah.
I think the order of magnitude was fifteen thousand square feet.
It was. The, this is the, this is the building program. It's a hundred pages, so I only made one copy.
That's all right, that's all right.
But it, it describes each of the, each of the spaces in terms of square footage and technology needs and electrical and lighting and all of that. So that's the document that hand the architects and this is what they come up with their schematics from. And. And the original called for forty-five thousand square feet. We currently have roughly thirty-one thousand square feet. And everyone agreed that that was too much. So it's down to thirty-eight thousand square feet to seven thousand five hundred nine hundred.
I see.
Yeah. I think the state approved that. I think the question is, how much, how much...
How much leeway?
Yeah.
There's a five percent leeway from what the state has approved to what gets built.
To the one or two thousand square feet?
I'm not sure.
Five percent. Five percent. Eighteen hundred square feet.
Part of that's program, right? The whole...
Yes, it's all program driven. It's not driven by, you know, this particular building. It's, it's driven by what is an ideal library or what is an adequate library for the town of grabbing.
And to build programs that are sustainable, you know, for a ten to twenty year, it's not just square footage and, hey, I need, you know, IBs. It's truly, it's the programs that you presented in here that is a different...
What is your children's services? What is your children's population? What, what are your services to senior citizens? And what, what does your large print collection need in terms of space and seating and lighting? Yes.
And computers.
Projected for the next twenty years.
Right.
As the state, as with most construction projects, it funds is looking for twenty-year life schedule as a minimum in any project.
Well, I think that's an important piece, right? It's a twenty-year projection of programs, not just sustainability of a building, a structure.
Yeah, that's right.
And I think that's a big differentiator for people to understand, such as structural program.
Yes, that's right.
Great.
So, to kind of put John's question in context, because obviously, it's all going to be about choices and how much the town is going to want to spend and where it's going to come from. Would it be, is it, is it a correct assumption that if we chose to do, not build the addition part, but just completely renovated, retooled the existing building, that we would be under the threshold of what the state wants to do and not get the grant?
Yes, absolutely.
So I just...
Yeah, thanks.
Fred, you had a brief comment or question?
Maybe not, maybe not so brief. I think part of the concern, I mean, I still don't have any numbers and probably won't get anything until Monday night with the rest of the hundred and ninety-two people unless you're on town meeting on FinCon with Salkman. Part of the issue that I think we should be thinking about, and I think the FinCon, Mr. Chairman, be something I'd like to ask them, is to how many different alternatives have they probed in their evaluation of this library project in their deliberations? How many discounted cash rate of return cash flow analysis have been put together? This is a fifteen million dollar project. And we heard earlier, I heard a lot of discussion around the professionals that participated in putting these studies together and the databases and all of the things that they tweak and keep up to date. But we also found out that they missed putting a roof on that wouldn't have come out unless this gentleman had asked the question on FinCon, why the number changed in a week. We didn't hear anything about that until he asked the question. We've heard the fact that we completely missed the cost on what it was going to cost to move the library and store it for maybe eighteen months or more. The same professionals that put this latest estimate together are the same ones that had a contingency factor which was substantially less than the contingency factor today. So the question becomes, what number can you believe? Who's made the calculations and who's looked at the evaluation of whether it makes sense to actually renovate this building? Would we be better off if we didn't renovate that building and just did a straight build? Because there's a huge amount of cost in this project associated with taking apart and then rebuilding. I mean, if you just built another building somewhere, you could avoid having to move and store, well, you have to move, but you wouldn't have to store for four hundred thousand dollars on the project. Who's looked at the point of renting space? Do we have to make a capital investment? Lots of businesses, lots of companies, people evaluate those things. And I haven't seen one piece of evaluation that's come out to say, look, we've evaluated these six or eight alternatives based on all the latest numbers and all of the latest market information, and, and now all we're going to do is we're going to present a set of numbers to town meeting that none of us have seen. I didn't get a copy of any of the handouts to look at tonight. None of it was on the packet that came out, that was online, that came out sometime today that was part of the selectmen's packet. None of this information is available. As I said earlier, there isn't a single number in the town warrant. And we, Mr. Chairman, one of your members of the selectmen asked, is this within the four corners if some extra number changed? Well, the number we're starting with right now is zero because there's no number in the warrant. There's nothing. So how do you determine what's the four corners of this? Is it fifteen million? Is it ten million? What, what's the number? And we, we've, we've put this project, the trustees, I'm sure, have worked extremely hard on that. But in any of the other projects that we've done in this town for buildings, we've had a dedicated committee with architects and engineers and finance people and everything else that have looked at the numbers. For example, has the town decided, for example, with our free cash, would we decide instead of having a nine million dollar bonding, maybe we've got to take three or four million dollars out of free cash and use that to offset the impact of the homeowners? Well, you know, people will say, well, we need that for other purposes, and I certainly would agree with that. But we're asking all of the people in this town to pony up a lot of money for this project with no real information. And I am very frustrated about this. I'm very frustrated about having to go to town meeting and make a vote in the blind. And I don't think we've done the right job on this project. And I, that's no criticism for the trustees. It's all coming together at the last minute. It's coming down the pipe. We're only three business days away from having town meeting. So, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to find out through you answers to some of those questions before we move forward on a lot of this discussion and take votes tonight. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Rick?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think as we've heard, this project has a lot of questions to it, but at the same time, I think there's an understanding that's been around for a while. It started five, six years ago. And one of the challenges we have is having people involved and staying informed throughout the whole process and the consistent set of people. But I think one of the things that we've come away with tonight is some answers to the basic questions about some of the choices. I think there's an opportunity for the library board to do a presentation at town meeting to reframe like you did tonight, David, and then some numbers that compare some of the choices. And again, these are schematic numbers that are big picture, they're not construction hard cost numbers because that's yet to come. But I think there's some choices that will be presented that people can make a decision about what they think is the best choice for them, both at town meeting and then at the voters. This information we received tonight will be helpful to inform, you know, some of the folks that have expressed interest about information. But then again, the bigger picture, there are other choices out there. So our job is to put it all out there at town meeting and see where it goes from there. That being said, I think one of the things that would be useful would be some of this information that became available tonight could be posted on the website, could be emailed to town meeting members. I know, Bob, you keep a list, or even possibly mailed to those if we don't have a way to get it to people, because it will be helpful for the discussion on Monday night to have the opportunity for people to review these, inform their questions, and answer some of the questions that these numbers do. I mean, they're not going to answer everything. Like we said, these are, it's less than perfect information, but in some sense, it always is. And so I think it's enough to move this forward and see where town meeting takes it. I think it's, I think we've got some good options and good information.
Yeah, John? I raised the issue in the finance committee about a month ago about the relative wisdom of taking your time. I think there's a June thirtieth deadline, but I raised the thought of making sure that the assessments were complete, that the alternatives were priced, and that we went to town meeting with as much runway as you needed to make the case. And in, with what Mr. Van Magnus has mentioned, is it still the view that as of tonight, you want to get this all done in three days and go to town meeting and, and try to get a decision on Monday night? Is that still the view that that's the best path to success?
Yes.
If...
I agree with both comments made, that it would have been better if it was all tightly packed so that there was no movement. I have a little less concern about an old, an old assessment being updated for a couple of years. I think that could have been expected, that there would be a movement, because the economics, you can't anticipate the economics of, you know, three years in advance, two, three years in advance. I agree that numbers, it would be good if numbers would be there. My impression is if numbers had been put out, they would have been incomplete and that we're simply dealing with a picture which is, which is evolving. These numbers that we've heard now are, were just put together. So to put information out to town meeting, ideally, it is there all packaged so they can have a couple of weeks to review it. I think the reality is that this thing is simply moving at a pace that numbers are evolving, still evolving, and, and the information will be given to everyone, granted, not as much time as everybody would like, but the information that will be given to them will be the final numbers. It will be, there won't be an added cost for each town person because the numbers aren't out yet. The, when the numbers are there, the, the number will be what it is and it's, you know, it's going to, it's going to, in, to the, to the bottom line, I think it was a hundred and forty per, per household. I have less concern about the numbers moving, given this tight timeframe that's happened. I'm more concerned that they don't move after and that the commitment we made, we can keep to. And yes, it does, the movements thus far makes you a little nervous about that, but I think people have heard to double down on their efforts to make sure that, that what's presented at town meeting is, is accurate. So I, I mean, I, ideally, yes, you put information out there, but I don't think putting out incomplete information is necessarily good either. So, so it will be, it will be information put in front of people. It will be a lot for them to absorb. The trustees and others presenting are going to have their hands full getting clarity so the decision can be made. It wouldn't surprise me if it gets delayed because of that. I think, I think if we delay, the question is, what does the delay do? It certainly moves us closer to missing the state funds. I, I think we just need to put out there, does that delay give us any better information? If it gets us better information and it's of value, there might be a reason to delay. But if the delay isn't necessarily going to get us substantially better information, I'm not sure there's a value in delaying. I'm not the one who decides whether January is the time or not. I, I think there's enough information to make a decision. I think it is more challenging with things moving with less than perfect information. But in my mind, there's enough information to go to town meeting. It's just that you've got to really do a crisp job of, of making the business case for town people.
Ben?
Yeah.
Plan going into tonight, which I'll certainly have to think about, was to send out an email to all of town meeting on Friday, probably around noon. And the reasons for the delay tomorrow, say, Friday, is CPDC meets Thursday night and has more information, they're considering an article ten. So by Friday at noon, we have three people in the staff coming in to make sure that everything is written up properly for town meeting so we can cover the whole warrant, this being just one of, one of the articles. You know, given tonight's discussion, I'd rethink whether we just split that into two parts and do one of them tomorrow. But it's not that we haven't thought about that. Clearly, we want to get out as much information as fast as we can. You know, without electronics, it would be impossible, but we can reach all but a dozen town meeting members by email, and the rest is getting US mail, which should be delivered in a day. So that was, that was the plan. Now, again, we may want to revisit that and have the warrant be separate and just have the article of the library that will be addressed by tomorrow. That's a fair point.
That would be my suggestion, but... Yeah, Bill, bring it.
Quickly, two, the one forty, I think is good. I think it would be obligation of the FinCon to put everything together because at the last meeting, I came up with five hundred eighty-three dollars between all the projects that are proposed out there and to James's point, because a lot of them will not be able to afford it, will not be able to remain ready.
Thank you.
That may be helpful. A lot of people may say, thank you.
You're talking about just the transparency on all the other major projects.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah, and we had...
I think that has to be in one picture, right up there.
We had it on the agenda last time. We've asked them to put it on the agenda again.
I think it's town meeting, David, has to be right up there on the picture.
I agree.
No take away. This is what it's going to cost.
But that assumes that all capital projects, we've done it once, which who knows?
Yeah. It's all under debt exclusions over the same ten years, Dave.
It shows up as... Well, well, in putting them out, they don't all have the same characteristics. Some of them are purely optional and do not have to be done. Others have different timeframes, but you're correct. They should, they should...
It's all in the same ten, ten-year timeframe though.
Well, it's not if you decide not to do it at all, is what I'm saying. So some of these, not all of these are absolutes, but I think that putting a transparent picture up on whatever it is is, I agree with that.
David, does FinCon wish to take any further action at this point tonight?
Yeah, I think we're going to, well, first, any, any other comments? Is, is everybody comfortable taking a vote tonight?
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other, any other questions, comments for anybody? Ben, I have a motion for article... We didn't have an open motion once.
I need to accept article six.
Second. Any other questions, comments? All in favor?
Yes.
Hey, sir?
Thank you.
Thank you.
And while we're on this topic, Ben, does the board wish to take a position on article six?
We've got the board of selectmen, back on the subject matter of article six of the January twenty eighth, two thousand thirteen special town meeting.
Second.
It's been moved and second, is there further discussion at this point?
No.
Okay. All in favor?
Four zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Well, thank you for your work. Looking at this list, a lot of people jumped very quickly in two weeks, so thank you.
Thank you all for the input and the advice. We will certainly do our best to capture all these comments and concerns. Not in any meeting, no.
We've got a bunch of people here who are waiting to talk to us about the budget, and we also have a bunch of people here in the audience who are interested in the subject matter of article ten of the special town meeting warrant. So I wanted to see if we wanted to deal with that issue, if we could try to deal with that briefly and then move on to our budget discussions. Rick?
I'd be in favor of moving on to article ten. That way, probably small and we can focus on the budget.
John? James? Okay. All right, so if, if staff will bear with us, what we'll do now is take the agenda item out, out of order. The one concern I have about it is that the published agenda shows this item coming up at nine o'clock, so there may be people who aren't here who'd like to be here for that discussion. So...
Yeah, I didn't realize that.
So, maybe while all the library folks are here, let's actually do that. All right? And thank you for your patience, everybody. Everybody, thank you.
All in favor?
Ruth?
I'm gonna give a quick overview of the library budget and then, much like other departments, ask questions. On pages fifty-eight to sixty-three of last week's package is the library budget. Did a board member did receive it? Just to remind you, we did do some of this last week, but just to remind you, all non-union employees receive a two percent step if eligible plus a one percent cola. And just to be clear in the material and to say it tonight, the board of library trustees did vote a budget that requested steps plus a two percent. The budget in front of you on pages fifty-eight to sixty-three have no change in staffing. There is no change of the budget either in staffing or expenses specifically that have anything to do with a building project. Ruth will describe juggling around what kind of things to buy in anticipation that you're gonna have to move, so you don't wanna buy the world book encyclopedia and then have to move it by little things. But by and large, the budget has not significantly changed, other than those little things for a building project. And again, lastly, as has been the case for generally the last few years at least, but not before that always, the materials budget does comply with a fifteen percent municipal appropriation requirement. And for those that don't know, fifteen percent of the library's budget has to be specifically earmarked if you will, or spent on materials. So choose the books and things like that. So that's the high level and then Ruth and Ken, the board is here to answer any questions.
I think just in terms of move, one of the things to keep in mind is the, you know, sort of schedule on the library project is going to be to have that project out with bid stew back in early two thousand fourteen, early calendar year two thousand fourteen. So the library will be in the existing building for approximately half the year if things go well and get another location for parks we have here. We haven't built in any changes in the library budget based on that temporary location, but we need to spend on, on that and obviously nothing more, so.
Yeah. And I assume, just because the way it's structured, in transition, like say the eighteen months that you mentioned, are you assuming full staff or partial staff, but due to overtime, it's, if the budget clicks the same or, and so you said yes, but, you know, why would that be? Because if two-thirds of the-
Yeah.
So, and I had so many things to bring that I didn't bring our temper, our plan for our temporary space, but what we're looking at is to have either satellites or outreach locations so that we will be doing, we hope, story hours in, for example, at the line and we'll be bringing a deposit collection to the senior center and doing book discussions there. And we plan to have at least a sort of rotating team of three staff members out in various neighborhood locations doing outreach all the time. Right now, programming is a huge part of our activities and in fact, if you haven't seen it, I brought last year's annual report, I haven't done this year's yet, but it's got a summary.
I love Ruth, she has more material every budget.
I'm in the right occupation.
But remember, we're trying to go electronically, we're trying to get the library to the next tour.
But our programming attendance is over eighteen thousand a year and we are increasing our outreach all the time and we certainly plan to continue that. In addition, we do plan to try to keep as much of our circulation activity as we possibly can. And having a third of our collection is, we're actually looking at, and we have exact numbers for thirty-five thousand items and we have a breakdown. Mostly, we're trying to bring things that are physically light and obviously our most popular stuff, which is in and out, in and out at the rate of about a thousand a day. And we also will be relying on our neighboring communities. We get daily delivery up to these twelve big red bins every day now of things that people are interested in more from other communities because they can see all of that through our catalog, which is very labor intensive for the staff. It's actually a lot more back in the house kinds of activity than usual. In addition, we will be spending our usual materials budget, so we will be spending close to two hundred, a hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars on, we're gonna buy as much digital media as we can. We already have a lot of ebooks and various types of downloadable. And people generally need some instruction and help with sort of how to get them onto their devices and how to register for that and how to do that. So we fully intend to have a fully functioning temporary library. It will be different and I think it will be, there will be a fair amount of different locations. We're particularly paying attention to what we can do two summers hence, in terms of our summer programming, because our summer programming is so big. And we'll be looking at our other departments maybe to help us out with space and that kind of thing. So the last sort of bottom line on the, on the plan is that we will have to conform to the municipal appropriation requirement for the entire time that we're not in the building. So we can't fall off that either. So in other words, town said, well, let's do it out for a year, we lose the state grant requirement.
Is it any way to get like an appeal on an agreement with the state, given? Yeah.
This is the waiver you're talking about?
Yeah.
Fifteen percent.
Yeah, we got that, was it last year or year before?
This last year.
Last year.
This for last fiscal year's budget. Well, I specifically asked that question of the board of library commissioners because I didn't know. And the answer was that you need to make your municipal appropriation requirement and continue to.
So while we're in storage with two-thirds of our material, we need to buy more material, which we need to store, is that the way it's interpreted?
Well, this is our normal, this is our normal expenditure, fifteen percent is our normal expenditure on materials every year.
Sure, but it's an abnormal year.
It is, it is, and we'll certainly be planning that way. So when we think about our move, we're certainly gonna wanna have a little move to expand during that.
But a lot of it's replacement.
Yeah, and a lot of it will be sort of the fast collections like people buy bestsellers and things that come and go. And we also know that a lot of our materials are always in, are always out in the community. We may be asking people to keep them for a slightly longer time. Don't bring them back.
Eighteen months will tell you where to go.
Long checkout.
Ruth, electronic materials though count for that material?
Yes, they do, yes, they do. So we're, we're spending about, we're spending upwards of ten percent now on digital formats and we're certainly looking at how we can increase that. One of the, for example, one of the things we buy is this language learning Mango database and that's about a, I think it's about a three thousand dollar expenditure, but people can use it remotely and it's, it's very legitimate.
So ten percent of, of the fifteen, in other words, two-thirds of that number is digital?
Yes.
Ten, no, I think she means ten percent, so one, one point five percent, not two-thirds.
Ten percent of the fifteen.
Yes.
Ten percent of the fifteen, yeah, about twenty thousand dollars.
Not sure if it's worth it, even in such an exceptional year, is it worth trying to get an appeal for the hundred dollars involved? Yeah. Anything else, any other questions?
Yeah, thanks.
Rick?
I have a question with this slide that Bob put up. Just to be clear, I think in the budget, the numbers for salary are showing the one percent cola?
Correct.
And even though the, I guess the board had requested two percent?
And that's motivated by the, the past three years, there's been a combination of either no step or no cola for non-union and the library represents a significant portion of those folks. So, you know, it, and-
So since two thousand nine, fiscal year two thousand nine, the rate of increase for library staff has been seven percent over those four-
Four years.
Four years. And when you compare that to union staff, the unions have gone up about twenty percent. So-
No, that's not, I'm sorry, that's not right. And it's, but it's also not common.
It's not the number that we've been running.
It's not, it's not what we're, in the, in the net effect of it, in the dollars cost side by side, that's how they, they add up.
For the library in particular, specifically the employees at various grades by union or non-union.
All of the library employees are union.
Okay, yeah, so you didn't compare. So the comparison number to the, that same timeframe for a union employee is-
It's different departments.
So different departments, so that could be police or DPW?
Police, fire, DPW.
Yes, yes.
But across the board, all non-union employees are still to one percent, Bob, is that how this budget reflects?
And the way that town manager's budget work and personnel policies work is all new to non-unions together. So whatever a non-union gets, all non-union gets. Just to give you a number to throw up there, one percent cola is about forty-five thousand on the non-union town staff.
From one fiscal year to the other.
Across the board for all non-union town.
All right, anything else for Ruth?
No, great.
Oh, thank you very much.
Once again, thank you all.
Thank you very much.
I love your data, researcher of hers.
Thank you.
Maybe we can do police and dispatch. Oh, there you go. David Chief?
On pages sixty-four to sixty-seven of last week's handout is the police budget. I'll go through all three as an overview and then a comment that's kind of a common show. For the police department, again, the same situation for non-union and the police have two unions and we're abiding by existing negotiated contracts for those unions. The police budget in front of you has no changes in staffing. There is some slightly different accounting in that the AR CASA wages in that budget are now shown as the full AR CASA costs. In the past, they've been shown, well, first of all, it was grant funded for many years, but then when it has been showed in the past, it's been shown net of a grant in small amounts. This year, just for clarity, the entire AR CASA, two wages are shown and the grant is shown as an offset, just so you can see kind of the true picture if you will. And, and just to remind everyone, the grant that was received by AR CASA was a secondary and slightly smaller grant, certainly than the one that had been applied for and that originally started off the program. Overtime, which I'm gonna discuss in a little while, for police and fire was increased by five thousand dollars. There's three new police officers that will begin shift work certainly in time for next fiscal year and that should certainly greatly reduce the needs of overtime in the current department. And expenses, as is true in most public safety budgets, are about level funding. There's a moving of things around, but in general, it's, it's not much of a driver. And I believe expenses are only two or three percent of the budget. On pages sixty-eight and nine is dispatch, same thing for wages, no change in staffing. As in the past few years, that grant is shown as an offset to wages, that's a nine, one grant. That grant is coming in just a bit above the forty thousand that's shown, so there's still a little wiggle room. You know, the grant will probably be more than we're showing as an offset, but just to be safe, we used a slightly smaller number. And the expenses are level. For fire, just to do it quickly, emergency management services, similar situation, wages, no changes in staffing. Overtime increased a little bit more than in police and again, I'll get to that shortly. The chief is currently evaluating an RFP for billing services that was first discussed sometime last spring. So hopefully we'll have that certain for the March FinCon budget process. We don't have the results of that now. This budget is, does fund and anticipate a twenty-five thousand dollar expense that we pay for this, but the idea of billing being that on the revenue side, we gain more than the twenty-five thousand spent in additional revenues and collections. If the chief decides through the RFP process that the twenty-five thousand is not likely to be achieved in revenues, then we just won't do it and we continue to do this. There is an increase in one expense that's particularly shown, it's in ambulance services, this new state requirement. We now have a medical requirement we need to pay for some services and Greg will discuss that in a little more detail. I just wanna close with a little bit of an overview of overtime. This is, comes up every so often. And again, this is just a budgetary overtime, this isn't how much overtime is spent. Those are two very different discussions. The important one is really what you're spending. However, when you record an expense next to overtime, quite often a cause of that is because you have an empty position. So you're not spending money on a wage, but you're spending it on overtime, so you have to take that kind of as a pair. The point of my discussion here is just to show really kind of a transparency and a truth in budgeting that we have put substantial assets towards funding overtime in the last five or six years. Each overtime budget has been increased by over a hundred thousand dollars at a time when we're cutting budgets. So it's not the case where we're going to town meeting and we know ahead of time because we're not funding it properly. That's not true at all. We're trying to fund overtime, you know, as aggressively as we can and as realistically as we can. You know, each chief can tell you there's different causes of overtime. Many of them are unpredictable. As a finance person, I can't predict what they are, but I can predict something will happen. So we've tried to increase overtime funding by fifteen or twenty thousand. I think each chief will tell you that the overtime budget is, is closed, but it's still a little uncomfortable and that's okay, they're meant to be uncomfortable. You don't wanna overfund overtime, just like you don't wanna overfund snow and ice. You know, it just doesn't make sense. But I think the point of this slide is just to answer some questions I had heard primarily from FinCon about are we budgeting properly in overtime? And the answer is, we can't know what it is, but we're certainly making a very good effort to do it at a time when we're cutting our budgets. So at that point, I think if you wanna ask specific questions, it'll be chief.
Chief, did you have anything to add?
No, I think Bob covered the overview. Just, you know, on behalf of his department, the last couple of years, you know, have been very difficult and we appreciate the support that we receive in public safety from all the boards, town manager and town meeting and citizens, because it's been difficult, but hopefully we'll come out with a good point of view there. We've been, you know, as fiscally responsive as possible we can and still try to put out a good service to the community. And, you know, we've made a lot of cuts over the budgets, as you've seen over the last few years, and trimming back to bare bones as thin as they can be. But I think that, you know, and again, this budget's the same way, you know, we kept it as soon as we possibly can, but yet still meeting our contractual obligations and in terms of the overtime that Bob was referring to. You know, I would think that probably a thing to add to that conversation is that when you look back at that slide from five or six years ago, we were under budgeted a lot of time, we were constantly going up well above the budgeted amount and we all knew it was under budgeted. And now we've got it where it's close to right size and that's what we're trying to do. We have certain obligations that we have to meet in order to provide the services, you know, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. We have people at work, it's not like an office staff. If somebody doesn't show up, we can't just leave the office empty for that day, somebody's gotta be there. So we, we do manage the overtime to the best of our abilities while, you know, staying in line with our contractual obligations and having the staffing that's, that's needed to provide the services that we need. You know, and as Greg has seen and the by chief has seen in the past few years, and we're kind of experiencing now, then you get into certain situations where you have, you know, extended leaves due to injury or illness and you get a few of those and those overtime may zoom in very quickly. You know, we appreciate the support and I think the budgets are, you know, a fair reflection of where we are today. But I'm gonna answer any questions you have.
Eric?
Chief and Bob, also one of the things I think is worth pointing out is the overtime expended for the dispatch.
Yes.
I remember years ago that that number was also a lot more variable and I think to credit to some of the work that's been done to stabilize that staff and maintain some- some consistency, that number's a lot more predictable, if at all.
Right, yeah, absolutely. Now, if you remember, that number was actually about double within this currently. Just probably...
About forty-five now.
Just before, just before two thousand and eight, it was up into the eighties. We had constant turnover in the dispatch center, and we're always trying to catch up. The last four years, we've been very consistent at dispatch center, we have not had any turnover. Probably will tomorrow now, but, you know, so far, so good. And, you know, as you noticed in my narrative, you probably picked up on it, you know, we've had some changes. There's been significant changes in requirements for downtown state. The state is pushing more and more obligations down into local communities, and one of them is dispatchers now need to be certified, they need to attend an academy before they can work, and they need to be EMD trained. And going along with that, emergency medical dispatch training, which we were doing anyway, but comes with technologies, and coming with that sometimes comes some other issues, and probably for not too long out in the future, we're going to have to sit down and discuss whether or not we need to dispatches around the clock. If you remember when we made those moves in two thousand seven, two thousand and eight, we added personnel in order to bring the overtime down, and it was successful, but we didn't even say at that time that we may need to at some point explore to dispatches around the clock. Currently, we run one on a line staff, a midnight day shift. But we're still looking at those implications, you know, the effects of those changes, and we'll continue to analyze that if we need to, and talk about that.
So Chief, this staff, so there's, is it forty-two sworn officers, how many?
Forty-two currently.
And that will include the three that are...
That includes the three who were started at the police academy last month, and as far as I know, they're still going.
Nice.
I haven't got any word that they reached out yet.
When you think about, again, development that occurs in this town, and we've had a, quite a few years where we've had constant development, whether it's Walker's Brook and the commercial, or some of the residential developments, we have one that's currently still under construction. It's always worth to get a sense of how you feel that's impacting your department as far as, you know, demand on the officers on shift, and, because ultimately that can impact overtime, your needs to staff this shift so that we've got the coverage to meet, I guess, ever growing demand. So I guess maybe a sense of how that, you know, we've added an officer last year, or was it the year before?
Last year, and then another one probably through the election, so actually two last year, which brought us up to the staffing level I have been requesting. If you remember, some of the years past, I'd be presenting my narrative, the Sutacha graph showing decreases in crime and things like that. This year, you know, we've gotten to the point where I was asking to get to, and we're pretty comfortable where we are today. And we took into account in building these numbers, you know, the increases, including the poultry development, you know, as well as the old tree, you know, we're going to have fifty more units in downtown, potentially the Charles Building at some point to add another series of units, and, you know, we're increasing population. With increased population comes increased work. Some different types of developments bring different amounts of workload. Generally speaking, we find sometimes in apartment buildings, where there's not kind of a, you know, an ownership in the community, sometimes brings a little more work to us than condominium developments, which you have an ownership in that property, you know, there's an investment in it. So in general, we are hoping that poultry development, you know, even though it brings a lot of population in a dense area, you know, we'll have to kind of wait and see exactly what kind of workload that's going to bring, we think we're...
Thank you. That's what I was going to ask, to get a sense of how they were incorporated in your projections on demand on your staff.
And I think the important thing with the new growth in poultry, that's how we funded the additional police officer. In the past, we sort of let that just kind of go into new growth on an even basis. This time, we looked and saw where the demand for services was going to increase between fire. We took that money out of the new growth to fund that position, and then additional new growth will just be distributed as we wanted.
Yeah, James.
Thank you, Chief, and Chair. Along those lines, we had had, I don't, can't go into details, but what I want to make sure is it's covered, is we've also had discussions about some of the negative developments that have been happening from drugs and alcohol. Does the forty-two cover those priorities and ability to make sure that we're keeping a watch and a lid on that?
Yes, to the best that we can. You know, I think that without, what we've been able to do is take some steps, as we've talked about executive session, to move some people to into positions where they're directly working in this area. And we hope that in the future to be able to move even a little more into that area. But yeah, that's definitely one of our top priorities at this point.
So, and along those lines, and I don't know if this is for Bob or for you, AR CASA, the funding of AR CASA, as you mentioned, Bob, is the grant, we were fortunate enough to get the second grant, but it's diminished from what we originally, we were fully funded previously, now we're partially, the explosive one?
So this budget fully continues the AR CASA effort and includes the grant that pays for some of it, and the town pays for the rest.
Okay. And that lasts for...
I think it's five years, is it? Or is it four?
Four, and this was four.
And this is the first year.
This is the first year.
Yes.
Okay, so we don't need to worry about this until probably two thousand sixteen?
And we'll still be looking for additional grants, including reapplying to the ones we missed, the renewal of our drug trade community screen.
Erica feels, Erica feels very confident, you know, we are going to reapply in the springtime, that's when the application process moves in for the Samson grant that we had previously. And, you know, when we weren't successful last year, they did give us feedback in that area, however, and they explained to us some of the areas that we could improve it, and we're working with Erica diligently, you know, trying to address some of those issues so that we're in a better position this year when we apply.
Yeah, I think from my perspective, the proactive and the reactive coverage from the police and fire on substance abuse hasn't worked. We've had some major headlines, which are very disappointing, but with that said, despite what the school shows in the youth survey, I think we have the outreach program this critical. I think we would see a much, much higher uptick on the risk survey than what we're seeing. I think you need that hand in glove of the proactive approach and the reactive, you know, working in a disciplinary and, you know...
Yeah, and I agree with that wholeheartedly, and I think it's important to remind everybody too that, you know, as when we started with the School Resource Officer Program many years ago, and when the coalition began and Patsy Cattini was involved, you know, we were very proactive in approaching this as a community issue. It is not necessarily a police department issue, a school department issue, a health department issue. You know, substance abuse is a community-wide issue that we need to work together on. And I think, you know, we have done that. We're a model in the area, and a lot of people come to us looking to, one, you know, get information on how we were successful in doing it, how we were working. And, you know, our policies have been brought up to the best practices, models where they should be, both police, school, health, and that's with the help of the coalition and the executive director. Without that kind of middle person to bring all those parties to the table and keep us all organized, it would be much more difficult to get to where we are today.
Agreed.
Anything else for the chief on police or for dispatch?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Chief Burns, evening.
Good.
Do you have any comments you want to share with us?
I just want to echo Chief Burns' comment. One of the things I've always said to my colleagues in the town and outside of town, I think we ought to have the support from the town manager, from the Department of Social Selectmen, to overtime, to the function. I very much do appreciate that, and we have quite a high level of commitment. For this fiscal year, Bob, I want to clarify one thing that Bob mentioned. We're attempting to increase to expenses to six thousand dollars. The Department of Public Health regulates the emergency ambulance services in the Commonwealth, and there have passed regulations that require increased oversight to ambulance services. Because we operate at the advanced life support level, we have to have affiliate hospital medical director, which we've had since two thousand and three, when we went from the advanced life support level. And that, when our paramedics give medications, they do so under that physician's medical license. The, our affiliate hospital medical director is Dr. Alex Clark from Millers Brook Hospital. He oversees the emergency department at Millers Brook Hospital. Because of the increase in oversight, he has to look at a medical response runs, he has to review all cases of cardiac arrest, pediatrics, a number of cases he has to really get into and look at. He also has to attend some of our training. Because of that, those requirements, he asked for some compensation, and that's the six thousand dollars that Bob mentioned. And so I kind of wanted to expand on that. And so I completely, that requirement comes from the state. As far as the budget, we're essentially looking to provide the same services that we do this year, next year, increases in the, in the budget of due contractual increases and in the, in lending and paid cost implications. The other minor expense increase was for four hundred dollars. I want to expand the EMS program again to provide medications on the engine that operates out of our Main Street station and the ladder truck that operates out of the Main Street Fire Station, when we have paramedics on that truck. We do have paramedic level equipment on those, on those trucks, but we don't, we can't carry medications unless we license them as class I ambulances with the state. We did that with our West Side engine, so this is a natural expansion. It will allow us, wherever we have a paramedic that's not assigned to the ambulance, to put that paramedic, paramedic that's on that engine or ladder, and we take medications with him. So if our ambulance is out, we can provide medication from such a platform with the engine or ladder truck.
Chief, is that an annual fee, the license fee?
Yeah. But in order, what we've been doing is we've kind of steadily progressed to that state. In order to do so, we have the defibrillator monitor on the truck, paramedic has to have that with him, and some other equipment as well. So it's not just like you pay, you know, two hundred dollars to the state and you can go. There's a lot of equipment that goes with that as well. So that's the last piece to allow us to expand on.
Chief, is there an inspection where they come in annually vetted, the equipment's there, and as you say it is?
They do, yeah. The state will inspect it, comes out each year, inspects both our ambulances, will inspect our, our anything as well. Looks at our relevance works, he looks at...
Yeah, James.
To that, a couple key words, trigger this, defibrillator and inspections. Are you responsible for that? I was just curious of, like, for example, St. Agnes mentioned church, that, oh, we're going to be installing a defibrillator in the back of the church if you want to train on it. Is that through Redding plea, fire, that would be doing the trainings, and then does it require ongoing inspections of that kind of equipment?
We assisted them in that, that's if the defibrillator, they'll monitor that. We assisted them with that in identifying, identification of the equipment to buy, suggesting where they could mount it within the church. And, excuse me, one of our firefighters is going to provide the training to some of their staff, CPI training and defibrillator training. So we've assisted some other departments in town as well with the senior sector, TPW as well.
But it's not standard required, because I know they're starting to pop up everywhere because supposedly, I guess they're easier, you just follow the map kind of thing, but...
Right. It's, they approached us with, we didn't approach them, they approached us with them, and we're happy to help anybody that's looking to do something like that.
Thank you. Chief, Chief, thank you both very much. One of the things, and I hope that folks in town appreciate, is the high level cooperation between police and fire. You guys work together in amazing fashion, and I know it's in a small part to your individual professionalism and that of the department, but also, I think, recognition of Pete's leadership and our crew here is able to work so well together, which is not necessarily characteristic in every community that, you know, you run across. Thank you both for joining us this evening.
Thank you.
Hope you have a good work. All right, now, maybe we will take up harder. And we do have folks here.
I'll stand up here where I can read my slide.
Greg.
So Article ten on the special town meeting is an article that would take existing section six, two, two of the zoning bylaw amended. Section six-two, six-three currently permits billboards as a special permit by the Zoning Board of Appeals. It does not permit the eliminated billboards, the electronic billboards, since they didn't exist back ten or fifteen years ago when the zoning bylaw was amended. So the amendments would allow electronic billboards as special permit, same process as would be permitted for, billboards currently would be the process for electronic billboards. In two thousand ten, go back one. Thank you. Two thousand ten, the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen, Library Board, and School Committee all participated in a brainstorming session at the two thousand ten financial forum, and in fact, the community was invited in. There were a number of ideas that were floated in terms of how to raise additional revenues, how to cut costs. And one of the areas for raising additional revenues was to allow billboards, not talking about electronic billboards specifically, but billboards. And so the, that fell on me then to carry that forward and say, how can we do this? You can do the next one. So electronic billboards were not previously even permitted by the state. There were two test sites that were allowed by the Outdoor and Advertising Board, one in Stonemont I ninety-three and one in Medford on I ninety-three. In the late fall of two thousand twelve, new regulations were finally adopted by the state, allowing electronic billboards and regulating how they would operate. Advantages to Redding to permitting electronic billboards is, first of all, it would be subject to bylaw being approved by the town meeting this next month, next week. Clear Channel, which is the billboard company in the area, would make application to the Zoning Board of Appeals. They'd be required to make application by the end of May of two thousand thirteen, assuming that the bylaw passed. The town would receive a host payment of fifty thousand dollars per year. The host payment would increase by CPI annually beginning seven-one-fourteen. There would be two existing billboards on North Main Street, and I have a map that shows where those are, which would be removed upon the issuance of the state permit, and one additional billboard will be removed by seven-one-eighteen. Point eight-six acres of land next to Kirshen Woods would be donated to the town. The town, including nonprofits, would have advertising capacity on the billboards, five hours per month per side, or thirty-six hundred image displays per month, and there would be no sexually rated nor tobacco advertising. All of these kind of details would be included in a separate agreement or contract between the town and Clear Channel. So this is a map that shows the town, there are currently three billboards in town, and excuse me if I get in the way a little bit here. One is up in the very far part of North Main Street, that's the one that would be advertised and eliminated in two thousand eighteen. The other, can put a symbol on here somewhere, is Kirshen Woods.
For self-existing?
No, it's right up here. Kirshen Woods, and there are two billboards on that site. Those are the two billboards that will be eliminated immediately upon issuance of the Outdoor Advertising Board approval, and the land upon which they sit is completely wet land, is point eight-six acres, and that will be donated, donated to the town at that point. So if you look at the map of the town of Redding, there is only one location that currently allows billboards at all, and there is only one location which would qualify for electronic billboards, and that is the Business A zoning district over on West Street. This is the mobile station on West Street on the other side of I ninety-three. This is the mobile station on West Street on the other side of I-93. So this shows schematically, this isn't, this isn't intended to be to scale, but this is the property of, that is, that Business A zoning district. This shows schematically a location where the billboard would be located, the angle of separation between the two faces, the faces are not exactly parallel to each other, they're actually angled up to thirty degrees apart, and that is to give them the area facing, particularly this part of I-93, that's a little bit on a curve. The green lines, which can't see terribly well, is the envelope within which the billboard needs to be located. It can't be closer than ten feet to the right of way of I-93, and it has to be at least twenty feet from the abutting property. And of course, there is only the one other abutting private property on the left-hand side. Next slide shows an aerial photograph that shows this location, West Street, ninety-three is here, and one of the things that I think is important to note is that these billboards have to be at least a thousand feet from each other. But if you look, and if Reading did not accept a billboard in this location, you can see the area of Woburn in this area where, which would be completely eligible for an electronic billboard, perhaps have some of the same impact on properties in Reading, and Reading would get no advantage of it. So process-wise, this has gone to a planning commission meeting last Monday, I think, was the hearing. They have continued that hearing until Thursday night, and they will be making their recommendation. Their recommendation would go to town meeting, you know, whatever the decision is, this is a selectman's article at a town meeting, so, you know, the board, you know, sort of drives the bus on this, and CPDC would be making a report. Sort of schedule-wise, if this is approved by town meeting, then it goes to the attorney general's office for approval. The attorney general's office has ninety days to approve. Once approved, then Clear Channel would need to make an application for a special permit to the zoning board of appeals. If that is approved, then they have a thirty-day window to meet with the, to make application to the outdoor advertising board and get approval for that. If that's approved, then that kicks in all the payment process and removal and all of that sort of thing. So that's all.
Question about some of the, I guess, the contract or the agreement with Clear Channel. So my understanding is that this is a private property owner who would gain some amount of rental. Clear Channel or never been with Clear Channel, if they put a billboard there, it would be there in perpetuity, I guess. What the, the potential revenue to the town, what type of, what's the timeframe that there be a contract between Clear Channel and the town where they would pay us fifty thousand?
Well, the, the process is that in order for an approval, excuse me, in order for an application to go to the outdoor advertising.
I mean, how, if we, if it gets approved, Clear Channel would pay the town of Reading fifty thousand for two years, five years, ten?
For the life of the billboard.
For the life of the billboard.
And it's fifty thousand dollars plus CPI escalated, so it's three percent next year and three percent following year, whatever that figure is. That's as clear.
And would that contract be renewed at any time period, or is it?
The contract is basically there for whatever period the contract is for. The only other one I've seen is Stonemont's, and I believe it's twenty-five years, but I wouldn't absolutely swear to that if I didn't bring it with me, because I certainly could actually make one with it. And so, process-wise, if town meeting approved the bylaw, then I think that would be the time to really negotiate. I mean, we talked about the business points here, but obviously, it's a, it's a legal document. Stonemont's is about a fourteen, fifteen-page legal document. That would have to be negotiated and approved by the board of selectmen. And what happens is, outdoor advertising board will not accept the application from Clear Channel without the town's support. And the town's support is, we have this contract, therefore support the application.
And is that the same with the fifty thousand? Originally, it was some range of dollars, but is that fifty thousand?
It's twenty-five thousand, fifty thousand is the range.
Is that still the range? So it's not guaranteed that would settle on agreement that was fifty thousand at this point, until it's all signed and done?
Exactly. Although Clear Channel was agreed that they would go with fifty thousand.
Thanks. Any comments, questions? Ken.
Pete, the billboard by one twenty-eight Ford, the one on our side near Jordan's, is that, is that under?
The one in Wakefield?
That's Wakefield, okay.
The one that will become an electronic billboard also?
Okay. So, does this same bylaw also cover the case where somebody, like, we're making this up hypothetically, like, Jordans would have put something up in one of their massive picture windows? Does this same language govern that?
No. This, the, the language in this zoning bylaw specifically allows only one location for billboards in town with it. And that wasn't arbitrary. The reason for that is, that's the only location in the town of Reading that meets the outdoor advertising board standards for billboards.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I don't have the Stonemont agreement with me, but I can show you.
Sorry, just to amplify, are you, did Clear Channel make representation that that location was also going to become an electronic billboard?
They made representation, they're talking to the town of Wakefield.
Oh. Okay.
So, you know, these, these billboards are going to be around us, whether they're in our town or not, they're going to be around us, and whether they have impact on us or not, obviously, we need injections to keep them.
Okay.
To, to take the town of Reading and just circle and exclude areas, and this is the only site that meets the requirements.
No, I just wanted to point that out because it's a valid point of what kind of characteristics could this be causing, especially with the problems that we have with ninety-three, one twenty-eight. Supposedly, near, with wisdom, right, the state's taking that into consideration when they come up with these distant numbers. So I just want people to understand that we weren't the ones that picked up, we went on the state regulations, and we've done the due diligence of locations of on and off.
Yeah. Pete, what restrictions are there? If Reading were to move forward with this language, what restrictions would this place on a subsequent location of something farther up ninety-three?
I believe it, the closest location, I believe, I believe they have at least five hundred feet apart. I think that's the discussion we have to do.
Was it five hundred or a thousand? I thought it was originally, um, Pete, is the new rate?
Let me see if I can find that quick.
It was originally a thousand.
According to CMR seven hundred, it looks like it's five hundred.
I think that's the case.
The original was a thousand apart. So they can be five hundred feet apart?
Right.
Okay. There are a lot of people in the room, so I know that there are folks who want to weigh in, so we'll take some brief comments. You should address your comments to the board. First, you need to identify yourself by name and address per selectman's rules, and I'd also like to try to avoid, just because of the lateness of the hour, we still have a number of agenda items, repetitive comments.
But you do have a number of emails in your packet.
Yes, and we do have a number of emails from folks from today, and I think my colleagues probably have seen those already, but. Harry.
Harry Simmons, precinct four. I'm one of the people that did the walk. My wife and I did fifty signatures, and we learned some things. I'm going to ask the board of selectmen to take this off the warrant by vote or vote to table it. The reason being, several reasons. One, what's goodwill worth? We had a Woburn councilwoman here this, this earlier. We worked very well with her on the interchange, that's going to come back. There's homes in that area. She definitely said, no way the town, the city of Woburn was going to do anything about signs. She's asking us to reconsider it. Goodwill. Now, when I talked to the people in my precinct, my constituents asked me to come forward, and they said no. Now, there's about forty homes in that area. There's James Road, there's West Street, Country, County Road, and the apartment complex, Reading Commons, it's to our interest to keep successful. Luana's, these people didn't know. We just had a meeting, what, last Thursday, the zoning board, there's not much information. If we table it, we have a chance to discuss this later. I don't care about the contract with this company, if they really want it, they'll come back. Other thing, revenue. I heard it was thirty-five thousand. It could be twenty-five to fifty thousand. Maybe they guarantee fifty thousand. That is miniscule to the property taxes that area will bring in. There will be a flattening of assessment on homes that view that, view that sign, nine stories high. People don't want that. The apartment complex is going to have trouble renting places. We can't have that go seeding. We've got to keep that successful. It's there. It's right across from the sign. At Luana's, I walked Luana's, they're looking right at that, that intersection, that sign was going to come above that. So assessments will really offset a point oh five percent gain in the revenues we gain from that. It is good to look for revenues, but that is not a good spot. That's the west side of town. We've had to go through the mall down at the south end of town. That was defeated. I'm asking this to be defeated. I guess that's, that's it.
Greg, thank you.
All right. I'm Bob Khanis on Howard Street in precinct four, and I just agree with what he said. If you look at the amount of money this brings in, approximately zero point oh five percent of the budget, that's not a lot of money. If you look at the fact that although that little area is zoned for the sign, it is surrounded. Just look at the map, it's surrounded by residential areas, and all of those people are going to be looking at the sign twenty-four hours a day, and it's going to drive down property values, and he brings up a good point with Reading Commons, if that's how it's going to pot, we're going to have real problems down there of the police being in and out there all the time. So I think any gain in revenue would be offset by loss of property values in that area.
Hi, D makers on one twenty-nine Howard Street. The suggestion has been that this would devalue property. I'm curious whether or not there's been any conversations with the assessors about what impact this has had in other communities, so we could have some facts to work with rather than opinions. Secondarily, is there an assessment on the value of this property that would not only bring the revenue to the town, but also recurring tax revenue? Because I assume it has some property tax value, so I'm wondering if there's any information the board can share with us about those assessments. Is that something we could obtain from the assessors? There must be a model.
The board is a structure and is taxable. I'm not sure what the value of billboard is and therefore what the taxable value is. There's only two electronic billboards in Massachusetts right now. They're both on ninety-three. So that's enough.
There are at least three.
There's three. There's three.
And what I've been told by outdoor advertising board is that these were the two, but maybe they're.
Yeah, they got two in Medford as well as the one in Stonemont.
Okay.
So. So we can gather, we might be able to.
So that's a very limited sample.
They're all commercial, all commercial.
Yeah, and the two in Medford aren't in anything in any way, shape, or form, it would be called a residential community. It'd be hard to do that. But it would be an interesting question for the assessors as to, you know, the value and whether they would subtract from that any other payment anyways.
Because you can gather, because the second question was, just a point of clarity, my understanding is that this article does not in any way suggest, as folks here may think, that we have to go and do this. All this article does is create an atmosphere for us to continue this conversation in a constructive way. Why not? I'm sorry, I was asking the board, Megan, I'm sorry.
I'll talk to you later.
Well, that's okay, I'm sure the board can explain.
Maybe.
Well, if they can't, we're in trouble.
Well, it creates a right, as of right zoning, for an application. Typically, the board of appeals wouldn't have the capability of denying such a permit just because they don't like outside advertising billboards, right? There would have to be some factor related to the specific design that they would make people change.
Right, and presuming that the contract was acceptable to the town in all its terms. Right. So in other words, while they couldn't reject it on a permitting basis, it could be rejected on a contractual basis.
I can add to that, I think the intent.
My point is, it could be rejected if the town as a body decided it really was against this for all the reasons, and we saw drawings, and we saw maps, and we all felt, because I live right over there in precinct four too, you know, that that was going to have this kind of impact that everybody's concerned about. Once the evidence is on the table, we would have the flexibilities of town to say no.
True, but the clear intent is to move forward and put something up there with the approval of this bylaw.
Do things, a, a special permit is different than site plan approval. A special permit is completely discretionary to the zoning board of appeals. And in fact, it was an application for a billboard, conventional billboard on this site a number of years ago after the zoning was changed, and the zoning board would have turned it down. It wasn't appealed, they haven't had a right to turn it down. I think that's one piece of it. The thing that's a little bit different about this situation is that the municipal approval, not only the zoning approval, but the municipal approval is required as part of the package that goes to the outdoor advertising board, and that's done through the board of selectmen. So that's the other piece, is you can have the zoning board of appeals approve a special permit, and you can have a, you know, a board of selectmen says, no, we're not going to, we're not going to sign an agreement with Clear Channel, in which case it also does moot.
So we do have a chance to gather a little bit more factual information, get a little bit more of what this really impacts, how this might look. I'm sure Clear Channel would share with us some, some institute designs to show us so we have some sense. Before we go saying yea or nay, I presume the board would ask those kinds of questions, correct?
It's noteworthy.
Yeah. I'm sorry, it's not worth answering?
Okay, I'll answer then, because, I mean, the point is, we're trying not to repeat it. The intention is that this moment right here is a community discussion, the opportunity to weigh in whether or not the billboard would be appropriate there. We know what it looks like, we know what it would look like. And so the question is, this is the moment where you decide. If we don't want to do it, you don't approve of the zoning change and then say, do we want to do it? Because this is the moment you do it. So the, so your question is, this is the moment we make the decision. Either yes, move forward and proceed, or no, and just cut off the avenue of having it. So that's, that's my answer to your question.
That seems premature, as, as just one individual in the community, it seems premature to make decisions without complete information.
You asked me.
I'm just offering, and I'm offering my, you gave me your opinion, I'm giving mine in return. Respectfully, I would just suggest, and I don't need to add anything else, we should get a little more information, excuse me, before we say yes or no.
Table it.
Any other comments?
Hi, I'm Demetra Zekras, I live at one oh six Oak Street. I don't think we should table it, I think you shouldn't do it, and I'll tell you why. That's a gateway into this town. We have several gateways. It's one I travel every day like a thousand times, it feels like, because that's the gateway into my neighborhood. But it sets a tone that I don't think this town wants to have. I moved here three years ago. I moved here three years ago in part because my husband and I did a lot of research, and we were very impressed with the fact that this town aggressively planned to create a pedestrian safe downtown, which wasn't the way it was when I was a kid, because I grew up near here, and, and went through with that plan, the grants that you got, the way that you did it. So it's a lovely downtown, and it's getting better, and it's fabulous. This is the wrong message, I think, and it's, to me, it's real simple. So I appreciate that you're gathering facts tonight, and I appreciate that you know that you've already gathered a lot of facts. I say, just don't do it. Respect you.
Any other comments? Yes, sir.
I live on James Road.
You, you name it.
My name is John Gorman, I live on James Road, and my backyard would be looking right at this probably. And I didn't spend a ton of money to live and look at a sign that you'd see in Vegas. And I didn't spend a ton of money to live and look at a sign like you'd see in Vegas. You know, this is a nice, quiet town. I lived in the city. I know what all the lights are. That's why I moved already. So it shouldn't be even discussed. For the amount of money that this is, and what we pay in taxes for our community, fifty grand is nothing.
Good evening, John Moran from Pennsylvania Avenue. I would just comment that typically when evaluating the merits of a tall structure in a town, that there would be an environmental impact assessment. In this case, some of the individuals already mentioned an economic evaluation, but I think typically we'd want to see, you know, view corridors, you know, light pollution. It doesn't seem like any of that analysis has taken place. And I would recommend that that would be done by a professional aid, you know, professional firm, not Clear Channel, obviously. So, you know, but I would just second some of the comments in opposition. I really, I think the impact would be significant from the few plan views that were shown. Clearly, you know, a several-story structure emitting light all hours of the day throughout the year would significantly impact quality of life and the perception of the town.
Any other comments before we move on? Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Megan Young, forty, Oak Street. One thing that hasn't been mentioned, but that we do know about, is the light emission. And I know four out of five of you dealt with Jordans and the light that happened around there, that, you know, we didn't have any idea that it was going to impact our neighbors. And I sat through, I heard two years of you guys working, trying to get Jordans to turn the lights down so that the lights didn't come running into somebody's bedroom. Knowing that that happens and knowing that there's light, I mean, I went to CPDC, and I actually, and I should say, I'm in the EDC. I spent a hundred-plus hours on the sign bylaws, really trying to help make them easy to understand and make them friendly for businesses. And at the exact same time from CPDC, I know that they're working on dark skies initiatives so that our residents don't have light on in their face after dark. So for me, when I read this, it just was in stark contrast to what our town is really trying to do. It's twenty-four-seven. It can right now, I know right now we're going to change it, but right now it says that it can flash, revolve, rotate. It's not going to do that, I understand. But the reason that they kept that in there, that the town gave us, is because it fluctu, it is going to fluctuate in light intensity for twenty-four-seven. I just think that it's going to affect our residents somewhere. It's going to affect Blueburn, it's going to affect Reading, and I really think that, you know, it's important to do well by business, it's also important to do well by our residents. So I just wanted to bring that up. Thank you.
General comment in addition to the specific impacts on individuals. A couple of years ago, and I don't remember the details, but I was pleased to see that Reading was voted the third or fourth most attractive community in the country to live in for a whole variety of reasons. And for the kinds of reasons that people are mentioning here, I think if this were to come to pass, I can't imagine that that would not impact that. Certainly wouldn't add to it.
Carl.
Carl Wild, sixty Highland Street. Not directly affected by this other than the fact that it's revenue for the town which I live in. I bet you could ask, I bet you give a thirty percent response rate of residents in this town that don't even know that where this is, is even in Reading. As far as a lot of people are concerned.
Let him speak.
As far as, you know, the highway is the edge of town for a lot of people, okay? It's not a ton of money every year. I will say this. A lot of the people that I've talked to, that I represent, wouldn't mind having a teacher's base salary every year, a cop's base salary every year, a firefighter's base salary every year. It's not a lot of money every year, but if it pays for a teacher, adding a teacher to our schools every year forever, or for the life of the billboard, that's something to consider. No? Okay, then the next time the school budget gets cut, don't complain.
Karen Harris, nine Goodness Road. So I live at the other end of the town, where those other remaining billboards are. Those are the ugliest things, okay? It makes that end of town look like crap, just as a, not that I want a billboard shining in my bedroom either. But I was wondering, Peter, do we have any other recourse while we're talking about billboards? Can we say we don't go ahead with this billboard, this new location? How long are we stuck with those old ones? Will they fall down?
Forever.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am. Your name and address.
I live on Border Road. If fifty thousand dollars, there's so much money to this town, I'll give you the fifty thousand dollars. Just say no.
Yeah, Ben, we heard women say no, but if you go a few feet up the street, it's Wilmington. And they will take the sign, I'm guaranteed it.
Okay, all right. So I appreciate everyone's input. I think it's sort of time for us to decide what, if anything, we want to do about this particular article. I'd like to add a few comments and then take other comments from the board. I think this is a bad idea, and we'll argue so on town meeting floor. I might even go so far as to add the word phenomenally bad to the idea. I've never been a big one on the idea that we're going to take away one bad from one part of town and add a bad to the other and somehow, you know, sort of be happy with that. If we looked at the graphic that the town manager put up, I was kind of horrified that we didn't sort of see the expanse of Border Road there. And I know that that section of town doesn't get a lot of attention from us. And you guys should speak up more about what we can do to sort of help you there. But in this case, I'm going to recommend that the board vote against this, recommending this to town meeting, and on town meeting floor will argue against the passage of this. The issue was raised about the money and that the board needs to do things to find revenue for the community. So I'm looking at my budget numbers, and I want to make sure that folks are aware of certain things. In the fiscal year that ended July first of two thousand twelve, which was our fiscal, or, I'm sorry, the fiscal year that we're in now, which will end July first, two thousand thirteen, we have anticipated new growth revenue, which is new revenue added to our budget, not from any of our existing taxpayers, to the extent that they haven't improved on their facilities. Five hundred seventy-nine thousand eight hundred and thirty dollars. For the fiscal year fourteen, whose budget that we need to get back to discussing, that projected revenue is an additional six hundred thousand dollars. For fiscal year fifteen, which is the year following that, the estimates from town staff would be another five hundred and fifty thousand, and for fiscal year sixteen, an additional five hundred on top of that. So within a four-year period of time, we're talking about something in excess of two million dollars being added to our tax rolls, not from any of us. We all get our two and a half percent plus anyway. This is new growth based on all those projects that this board and town meeting have aggressively pursued, you know, over the last few years. You know, and the final comment is that I also don't think we need to commercialize every square inch of the earth, let alone... And while I appreciate that Clear Channel is offering some time for us to advertise stuff related to the community and the billboard, I think we have lots of other mechanisms that we can use and perhaps do a better job, you know, such as sort of the issue that our daily newspaper in town hasn't, as far as I can tell, written one word about this issue in any of the weeks that it's been under discussion. So that's me. Jonathan.
Ben, thank you for your comments. I struggle with this for a couple of reasons. One is I too very much enjoy the quality of life here in Reading. And we're constantly struggling for ways to add to our budgets. And we just got done with a discussion moments ago from our fire and police who acknowledged, finally, they're up to the levels of staffing that they require. But tonight's vote, to me, is not a matter of whether we put the sign up or not, but whether that question gets answered by the audience outside this room. You guys have spoken passionately and stridently, and I can't quibble with the logic you put forward, but I'll raise the question. I think the question ought to be put to the entirety of the body, not just the three or four dozen that have shown up here tonight. I'm not going to quibble with the logic you put forward. This was a subject that was brought forward in the financial forum as one of the candidates to raise money, in which an equally strident and equally vocal group of people identified this as something we ought to look at. Our package tonight has a number of letters that were written in support of this. So there are proponents on both sides of the question. I don't think this, tonight's discussion makes its ultimate end any more obvious, but I do think it's worthwhile to put to the entire audience at town meeting. And on the merits of the question, let it be decided there. I'm not judging whether this is a wise pro program. I'm simply saying, from a zoning point of view, this is a necessary but wholly insufficient means to move forward. You've got other reviews, you've got permitting, there's nine other ways this gets turned, this gets turned down. This is merely the vehicle by which this recommendation, which was made years ago, gets adjudicated by the full membership of town meeting. So in no way am I endorsing the merits of the proposal, rather the wisdom of letting the entirety of our town members look at it. And so in that, for that reason alone, I'd be inclined to let this move forward. I'm not enamored with this idea at all, but there are more voices in the town than there are in this room, and they'll all be heard in a few more nights, all of the elected town members. And that's where we ought to have the discussion. So for that reason and that reason principally, I'm going to be inclined to move this towards town meeting floor.
Yeah, so I want to thank everybody. I was trying to keep up with the notes. I'm sure I didn't capture it all. But, you know, all, you know, excellent and valid points, and Harry, you know, perhaps tabling and investigation that goes along with David. Right, so there's two, you know, views. One is opposed, one's in favor, yet let's have further discussion and understanding.
Information.
Information. Because you had mentioned, and others had mentioned, a nine-story building, and Rick, you mentioned, well, we know what this looks like. I'm curious as to one where you got a nine-story. I had never heard that, and I've been in these Clear Channel meetings. And I don't know how you know what they look like beyond driving down ninety-three and seeing them in stone, et cetera, which to me does not describe or visually articulate what we look like in our facility. And from a historic perspective, Ben, I agree with you. We have worked diligently on our new growth. I think we've done an exceptional job. And when I say we, I really do mean the community, not this board. Really, it's nothing we did necessarily, but if you recall, why Finkcom made that request of not just this board, the school committee, and it was a true financial forum of we need to look at alternatives, because we were at a budget negative, we were cutting budgets, we didn't have the growth. And somebody made the comment of fifty thousand dollars is pittance on this budget. I would welcome you to either join Finkcom, join this board, join something so you understand the process that we go and Finkcom goes through on an agonizing, agonizing basis. Our financial forums for this board alone is usually three to four nights, if not previously they were Saturdays. And at that point in time, we debated many boards because we had to cut out of our budget. It wasn't a flat budget, it was a negative twenty-six thousand dollars. Between board of selectmen, school committee, and Finkcom, the number of man-hours in order to prepare a budget for town meeting was enormous. So when you look at compared to a semi-two-million-dollar budget, yeah, it's pretty small. But when you look at each department, which we are, you know, elected by you to do that, it's agonizing to make those decisions of who gets the money, who doesn't, how can we do it? And let me tell you, when you don't have this new growth revenue or revenues to play with, it's very difficult. Even with these new half-a-million-dollar new growth, we're at a flat budget, people. We are no growth in our community. And that's with building an enormous project down in your neighborhood of Archdale.
We have to bid properties, and I don't need another.
Right. And I'm not saying that this is the, I'll agree with John, it's not the end-all, be-all. But if we don't investigate these, and if we don't let them come to the surface, how can new ideas come forward? This is a very healthy discussion, and I took down some great notes, and now I'm sure you guys are also thinking, I don't want that to happen. I'm not necessarily saying I want it to happen, but I bet now you're going to come up with some ideas for this board to consider. And that's what we're looking for. I mean, and this, by the way, this goes back two to three years ago. I'm looking for someone in Finkcom who was here back then, Marcy. Two, three years? Two years ago that we did this. So it's...
So why are we here in the mother town?
I don't know, because it's been... Oh, well, you know why you're hearing about now? Is because the state, as Peter indicated, changed their regulations to even elect a lot of these electronic billboards, which, you know, weren't approved until, I want to say November, December, but I don't...
October two thousand.
Okay. So that's why it's now coming to surface. But when we had the Finkcom meeting two to three years ago, we looked at billboards, because we have three of them in town, so we knew that would be a revenue producer. We looked at cell towers, right? But our water towers are full, no capacity to put any more cell towers there. That's a great revenue producer. We looked at sale of real estate, which is also part of this forum. We looked at other options. School committee came to the table with some of their options for revenue producing. But, so the reason why it's on the warrant now is because now, from the state perspective, it's a lot of use.
I understand, but I have three kids that go to the school. They're going to be growing up, and their bedrooms hit that corner. So if that's illuminated twenty-four-seven, you know, my property value just went down two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. You taking that into consideration of all this fifty thousand dollars a year? I mean, and not just my property, let alone everybody else's.
Can I say one thing? Just think how something came up in a Finkcom meeting three years ago that nobody knew about. Because it's sad and kind of progressed for three years, doesn't make it a good idea, just because it's the longevity of the idea that's been out there. Just because it was discussed three years ago doesn't make it a great idea. It just means that it's an old idea, you know, an idea that's been discussed. So when people say, oh, we've been talking about this for three years, that doesn't make it a good idea.
Thank you.
It is a, not necessarily a question, I'm looking for you to actually raise your hand and answer, but I'm curious if this group, if, would you allow digital signage near Walker's Brook?
No. Not in the state. No way. Just stop it. We don't need any more.
Let me tell you, the state, it's already gone. I'm sorry, the trains left the station. You should have been talking to your legislation and not this board, because this, you said not in this state. And I'm sorry...
I'm saying, I don't want it in my town, I don't want it in my state, and I would like my country to stop.
The train for the state is right there, I'll tell you.
The train, the president train. Right here in Reading.
Okay, all right, thank you, folks.
Exactly. Our border will be surrounded, so, you know, and so if you, you're talking about which way is it going to face?
Over the last couple of weeks, I've spent a lot of time trying to catch up to speed on this issue.
on this issue. I read the zoning, the questions as to how much information I know, why do I think it's going to be X high or this big. I've been reading the state regulations, I've been reading the zoning, I've stood under the sign in Medford. I've learned a lot, and the more I learn, the less I think this is appropriate to impose upon our neighbors, our residents. I also understand that there's a need for money, there's a need to generate revenue, but there's no free money. And what we're asking is a particular set of folks who live in an area near where this zoning change would be applied, to absorb substantial costs that nobody else in town will have to absorb. And so the question I ask, that I'm going to ask at town meeting, is how many folks who will vote on this would say yes if that billboard was in their neighbor's yard, and they had no opportunity to gain any benefit from it? I think the number would shift down so that, it would change the argument in many ways. But part of this, part of my perspective on this is greatly influenced by my time spent on the interchange task force. When I first started as a selectman years ago, that was an issue that hit Redding like no other issue I've ever seen. There was a plan to fix that interchange and fix, they wanted to resolve the traffic flow, they wanted to reduce accidents, because it's the most dangerous accident prone in the interchange in the whole northeast. And in doing so, they wanted to take 70 to 80 private homes in Redding. And that moment on, from that moment on, I understood the impact that it has on individual property owners, and the value people put on, not the physical property, but the home that they've created in this community. And to change that, any action by the town isn't something you do lightly. And it's one thing when you have a significant piece of property, and you have significant developments that we've dealt with over the years, but this is somehow unique. You've got this small, one-point impact that can happen somewhere in town, and the plop in that location, to me, is just untenable. I can't really imagine the, it's something I cannot imagine doing, as an individual, as a town meeting member, as a resident of this community. It's just so far from how I see this community working together. I was impressed that the city council from Woburn came forward, you know, I hadn't seen Darlene in years. But one thing that came to mind after seeing her response and how Woburn is addressing this, the regulations here, I don't know if anybody's seen the regulations that govern these, that the state put out, but here, there's a section that says, "The following areas are specifically designated as sign-free areas in which no permit shall be issued." The town of Lexington, the town of Lincoln, and the town of Concord. I think we have an opportunity, we've got willingness of other communities, I think we have an opportunity, depending on how this progresses from town meeting, is to join together and have Redding included. So I, at this point, there's no way I can support this, there's no way I will support this. I would like to see this even removed from the town meeting warrant, but I think it's best to have a discussion and deal with the consequences. Thank you.
Great. All right, so, we're going to move to consideration of this warrant article. So I have a motion.
Mr. Chairman, move to recommend the subject matter of Article 10, Town Meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion from the board?
No.
All those in favor? All those opposed? Two-two, so there is, there is no recommendation from the board. Thank you all.
Can you clarify that there is no recommendation by the board but stays on the warrant?
Yes, it will stay on the town meeting warrant. So for folks who are concerned about this issue, your next opportunity to express your concern is at CPDC's Continued Public Hearing, which is scheduled for...
7:45.
7:45 on Thursday at Town Hall. And then you will also have the option, obviously, of contacting your town meeting members, because this will be an issue that they'll take up next Monday at Town Meeting. Your public's invited to attend, that begins at 7:30 in the Performing Arts Center at the high school. It's the last warrant article, so it might be finished on Monday, it might not, but we'll see.
It's important to note, town meeting members are listed on the website, right, in their precinct, so if you don't know who they are, go up to the website and you're... So I just want to reiterate, Anthony, John, and I, the reason I'm in favor is because I need, I believe it's important to have the discussion of revenue generation raised up. And if it's squashed without having 192 people debate it or discuss it, I don't think it ever will.
All right, and I'm going to ask you, if you're going to leave at this stage, be quiet, because we have a bunch of other stuff we have to do this evening. And thank you all very much for coming, we really appreciate your input and your company, quite frankly, because we're going to be only in a minute, I think. Jeff, you and your army are up next, if you want to come to the table and join us.
Wait, I gotta sit up here, wait on them.
Public Works budget will split into two parts, one is the general fund portion, and then one is the enterprise portion. The general fund is again last week's material, it starts on page 74. The quick overview, this is the part that you're going to be reading, I hope you're not going to let go. The quick overview is on the slide above, and I have a couple of slides that follow. Again, using existing negotiated union contracts and non-union as described. On this budget, there is a change established slightly, as opposed to most budgets you saw that night. Two part-time, short-term seasonal employees are restored to this budget, one each in Parks and Forests, and one in Highway. Some of the overtime costs have been shifted around within the budget, there's no real significant change in overtime, but some of the specific divisions have different-looking overtime, some are higher, some are lower. Snow and ice, which I'll get to in the next slide, is increased, and there was a late request, a week or so ago, from EDC to fund the plant watering downtown program, and I know you're all familiar with. That was funded, I believe it was two years ago, by the town side, by DPW's budget. This year, it's being funded by the EDC, and they've requested, again, going forward at an unspecified level, that the town fund it again, pick it up again. Some of these figures are a little small, but I just want to point out, some macro trends. This is the snow and ice history and the snow and ice budget. The red line up there is the actual expenses, you can see last winter, I didn't include this year, it's obviously just a partial year. I think the important figures here are the five and the 10-year average, 20 years is too long, costs are changed too much, but five and 10 isn't a bad bandwidth. And on the far right-hand column, you see the net costs of the town, sometimes we get FEMA reimbursements or MEMA reimbursements, so the important thing is the far right-hand column. And what the five and the 10-year averages tell you is 700,000 to 800,000 is the average net cost in town. What I'm proposing next year is a $625,000 budget, slightly up, just $25,000 up from the past year. And there's been some debate between the selectmen and Fincom and staff about what the right approach to this is. I know Maile and I never saw eye to eye, she said, if you know the numbers between, say, 700,000 and 800,000, you should budget 750. And I would always say, well, if I know that it's in between there with some variability that's unpredictable, you put it below it, because otherwise you're laying off someone in case it snows, and may not snow. And I say that only because, again, our free cash position is very low. So I think the long-term appropriate way to budget this is something below what you believe an average is. And again, you know, using last year as an example, I would not have suggested we budget 300,000, because we knew it wasn't going to snow, even if we did, because that doesn't set you up well for the future. You really want to kind of take a nice, steady, easy path to it.
Well, this may be a stupid question, but it's interesting that it's growing in all averages, all-time, so is that just wage growth, or is that increased equipment on the road?
I would say it's the cost of supplies, if you agree.
Salt, especially.
But the real big variation is in the salt, road salt, right? It's not snow.
Yeah. Yeah, actually, there's a couple of years of salt, one year we went up to like 750 folks a ton, it's not really, it's long enough, so a couple of years get really whacked, but it's a combination.
So, again, the details are on page 74 and for a couple pages, but aside from the two part-time seasonal workers, the budget has really not changed from the current. Do you have any questions for Jeff and George and James?
Just a couple of big projects to talk a little bit about. Obviously, a big success is ongoing is the trash, the trash program. We've got the award, they're received, and continues to be a program that obviously we're proud of, and I think we're up to eight communities now that basically have been in our program, and I still get calls periodically from communities. So I think it's something that we'll continue to look at and tweak as we go on. We're looking at maybe additional recycling opportunities that might come up, for example, maybe doing something on electronics, you know, curb-side recycling, or looking at that part of it versus the solid waste disposal part, or I think the recycling end is something we continue to tweak and look at. And, you know, we had a drop-off styrofoam at the public storage now, and it's amazing how busy that place is on a daily basis, we've got people coming in, dropping off the styrofoam, I mean, people coming in, just one little styrofoam container, dropping it off, but...
To get ones, yes.
And they come in, and actually, what we do is, the material comes into the dispatch room there, we screen it there, because sometimes it come in as acceptable material, sometimes it won't. I mean, some material that's coated with a certain substance isn't really recyclable, so we do that separation there, and then take the material out to the trailer, and it gets picked up periodically, so that's a really successful, so. As we go forward, we continue to look at that whole program, and we're just, we've had the program going a little over two years, started October 2010, so in that timeframe, we estimate we've probably saved a couple hundred thousand dollars, you know, the cost of ones, because of recycling, going from 17, 18% to like 30%, so it's really been a great program. And it's really, it's the amount of us, it's the residents, the people that really stepped up and did a great job, so we'll continue to look at that. The other big picture item is, I know that we talked about before, is the whole issue of succession planning and getting ready for the next, next level of, next look at Public Works. In 2014, looking at a minimum probably five or six retirements, I haven't got specifics, but I think definitely sometime in 2014, we're talking about a number of supervisors, another informant, people in management positions. So we've had a really, what I think is a really nice, aggressive, ongoing program as far as putting the training pieces in place for people coming up the ladder. I think we're one of the few communities in the state, I think, that now has two certified operators. We have one employee just received that distinction a couple weeks ago, bought heating inside for quite a while, but, and we have two PEs, one right here, and not, you know, I don't know if any other communities have two certified operators or two PEs in the same community, so we've got some really talented people that have been stepping up. A number of people in the water department have received their distribution licenses, I've got Apple employees, now Yamaha employees that have got their CDLs, but I'm looking towards their hoisting license, so that continues to be an ongoing process. And I think, at this point, going forward, I'm now going to be looking at maybe some additional supervisory management type trainings. I think my office has good programs, and some of the highway associations do, in fact, I had three or four employees go to SS County Highway Association supervisory training program a few, a couple months ago, so there's going to be some big changes, and it's going to be, actually, right now, I'm also at the same time working on a reorganization, where with these retirements happen, that there's an opportunity there, and I think the time is right to look at some changes in the organization. Combining some supervisory personnel perhaps, and changing some responsibilities within the department. And again, I think it's all going to come to fruition as part of that transition process, so 2014 is going to be a lot of changes, not only in the organization, but also in the facility. As you know, we're looking at some facility issues now, where we have a planning tool now, a method plan, we're pretty much finalized, with some preliminary things we could do with the yard, in terms of just reorganizing our materials area, or doing some other smaller type improvements for the operation, but also, as the board knows, we're up to the bid right now on RFP, to look at the garage, as well as the cemetery garage, to look at the Public Works facility in terms of some operational improvements, relocating some functions in that whole process. And actually, I think that's in the FY14 budget going forward after July 1st, that consulted, that planning is there. So, again, 2014, that's just part of that whole picture, how Public Works is going to change, both operationally and potentially structurally, so as you go forward, it should be an interesting time and exciting time for Public Works.
Great, thanks. John?
A couple of questions, you said you had five supervisors approaching?
Uh, no, right now I've got three that'll be approaching.
And that's three out of a pool of...
Five. We've got a couple, well, I'd say we've got six all together, but we've got three at the garage, two on the water, one on the...
So 50% of your talent.
And I've got actually two formans, potentially one, well, one in water and one in highway also, so it picks up, upper structure personnel is going to be changing. Again, I have got specifics, but in terms of a specific, as I've been told, I'm looking sometime in 2014.
The move to 2X or every-week recycling, would you, do you hazard a guess as to how much that's boosted our collection volumes? Is there any way to know?
Recycling, dramatically, yeah. Before, we implemented the, well, we went to weekly and mandatory at the same time, so they both factors together, but we went from...
2X or 50%?
Seventeen percent on to over 30%.
And that's volume or dollars or...
That's volume, so, but, and again...
We saved how much money, would you estimate, on an annual basis?
Well, we're saving like 120-ish thousand dollars a year. Now, you know, there's a lot of moving parts here, you've got a bad economy, trash collection actually tends to go down in a bad economy and so forth, but I think by any benchmark, this has been a home run, you know, we've got 30% increase in recycling, and a much decrease in trash. But how much of that is because it's every week, how much of it is because it's mandatory, we're not picking up your trash if your recycling's not out there, it's hard to...
It certainly hasn't hurt the...
Yeah, and honestly, I mean, I don't know what you all hear in the community, to the extent that I talk about trash with residents, I hear very positive things. We had, you know, a few, there's really a very few problems, I think, in rolling it out. I had maybe half a dozen calls, people claimed they had no recycling, they couldn't possibly recycle and so forth, but, but when you explain the program to people, I think they've really got it, and they got what we were trying to do, and I think the volume is tremendous.
And we significantly expanded the kind of stuff you could recycle.
Exactly, exactly.
Which is my last question, the electronic part, is that, is that something you think about in next year, the year following?
We're looking at that now, actually, sometime within, within the next, well, year or so, I think we're looking at as a possibility. We did have the drop-off on...
Right, the drop-off, sure.
And now, yeah, anything that takes additional weight out of the stream, you know, helps the cost.
The more you can do curb-side...
To make it easy for people to have...
Right. Because it makes it easy, the greater acceptance there will be, and the greater participation.
I can't wait for the next one, because I got a bunch.
James?
To the point, bad reason, I know you guys collect this, but bad reason, because I, just those little AAA, but, so my parents up in Hamilton, talking about trying to get more out of the stream, has a very aggressive, I know you were talking about limit the number of barrels. They have one barrel, it's a, we didn't want to go that program, it's a set barrel that's provided by the, provided, that's one, and it's what, 20-gallon, it's a tiny barrel.
Trash pickup.
But the way they also do it is they're doing garbage pickup. We used to have years ago, but now it's brought back, true garbage waste, right? So I didn't know if that's something we should invest, because that probably is a lot of weight going through.
That's a pilot program up there, but I think one of the reasons is, I think, most of Hamilton, if not all of it, is on septic. And garbage disposals don't work well with septic, that's a necessity. Redding is 100% sewer, and I'd be willing to bet you at least 50% of our households have garbage disposal. So there's a little garbage going in the garbage, is my guess. But that's still a pilot program, I think, James.
Is it?
Is it permanent now? Okay. I saw when they were sort of piloting it, there was...
I just remember growing up, right, the guy would come and he'd take, they'd take him up to pig farms.
Right.
I still have the little thing in my backyard.
Well, the little stim in the ground bin.
Yeah, there's a few houses in Reading I've seen that are still there.
So, I was just curious if that's something that you guys were looking into?
They're still really pushing the organic, so I mean, they piloted the program up in Hamilton, one of them, I think, both. I didn't realize it would become permanent.
Yeah, sure. But I know, I know we flagged you on the number of barrels. I think we're at four right then, or you want to go down to two? And I'm like, I was one of the people who were like, no way.
You want to do one?
I just got from Jane today, we did a barrel census. So, we know what percentage of the, of the households in Reading put out how many barrels. And we'll put that on the agenda for the board. It's, it's interesting information, but that by itself doesn't necessarily reduce the trash tonnage. Because if people are, if the average is two barrels, then it is. If you lower it to two barrels, that doesn't really do anything. I think the, I think the incentive program of recycling, more stock, curbside, weekly, you know, that's the incentive side of it. The barrels is sort of the penalty side.
Stick of the carrot.
Couple of communities have gone to one barrel, but then other they kick in. I usually, they all have overflow bags, you know, you buy bags and that gets into another industry. It gets into a whole, you know, bag of, you know, they want to get involved and so.
One of the things that's been successful too is, not that we don't love our customers and love to see them, but they very seldom have to come into the Department of Public Works anymore to pick up those stickers for bulk waste and all that kind of stuff. So, it's just much easier if you, if you have something like an appliance, you know, you can just call, you get, you know, you pay over the, you know, with your credit card over the phone and they just pick up your appliance and it's dealt with. And it's, it's much simpler for everyone.
So, that's a good point because I did have that question when we went through that budget of that loss of revenue, of that twenty-five dollars a sticker, that seems to have had no effect on your budget.
Fifty-hundred percent generated, it was a lot.
No, I mean, we actually, we made up for it in some way.
Yeah. Great.
Just an example of the way we made up for it, we actually shifted a staff person. We reduced the staff in the public works department by one person, shifted part of their function up to the finance department. So, you know, we saved in, in staff attrition more than the income from the sticker.
Okay. Last thing on a budget perspective that you run is the compost. And I don't think I've really seen what it costs to run that, right? Because to me that is.
This is the compost center?
Yeah. And I know it's a hard one to.
Our key had done a presentation, I was going to say that.
But it wasn't complete because it, it still didn't articulate enough for us to be able to say, did the twenty-five dollars per resident sticker cover our expenses?
All right, so you would like a presentation?
I've got a presentation two or three years ago that probably has that, it might be a little outdated. But it's the last time you looked at whether to split the fee and whether to have two fees. And, and you guys had given me some pretty good cost estimates.
Yeah, Bob's got a pretty breakdown as far as expenses and all.
So, we could.
And I was going by the, you know, the personal costs and then getting, you know, machines.
Well, maybe we need to freshen that up to the board and put that on a workshop meeting for, for discussion.
Right. I'm just curious because I'm seeing more equipment down there to make room, right? Good news is people are leveraging it even more. So, do, you know, what does that do to our expenses? If anything, if there's nothing, terrific. So, I'll keep that, the other points. I'll wait for another DPW night.
Do we have anything else for Jeff on the DPW budget?
There is in the base budget, a little bit of salary increase, which is to restore a highway seasonal employee and a parks and forestry seasonal employee. It's great bang for the buck. They'd like to have actually two in each, so we couldn't go quite that far this year, but it's really, that's in the base budget.
Great. And bottom now we're up to the enterprise funds?
Yeah, we did dead capital last week, so now we have about a two-hour presentation on water.
We didn't get that detail in our packet, is that, I mean, in the printed copy that was given to us? Do we have that in the packet somewhere?
I had a game seven.
Oh, did we just get it tonight?
It should have come up last Thursday. Okay, anyway. Right in the bottom left-hand corner, this refers to the packet you have in front of you. So, water starts on page seven of the selectments packet. And I'll go over most things fairly quickly, but I do want to spend a little more time on the big water main project, just so you can see how it sort of fits in. And the other thing to discuss is water usage and, you know, how last year we had a certain budget cost, but the actual rates were very different because of water usage and a few other things. First of all, this year, the budget in front of you is up three point six percent. I'm suggesting you use slightly less reserves and that will be explained later over a longer period of time, which would mean a four point six percent budget increase. Jane just gave me some good updated figures on usage and more or less, the actual usage, see if I get this right, is five percent more than the budgeted usage, which is a good thing, meaning we're collecting at least as much revenue as we need. So, we certainly don't need to change the usage assumption for the budget. So that a four percent, you know, a four point six percent budget should more or less translate to rates. Last year, we got a big change in usage of eight to nine percent. We also had to change the collections because we were seeing a slack off in collections. More people than were expected, let it slide and essentially we added to the real estate tax bill, leaned maybe one or two years later. So, the town ultimately gets paid. The problem is you have to run the enterprise fund of money you're collecting that year and that money was being collected in a future year. And then it goes into water reserves, but it doesn't help you run the current year's budget. So, the point is you don't have any of those issues this year. You look at the budget, that's pretty much going to translate to your rates. The wages in this budget are up about two and a half percent and expenses have been cut. For MWA, RA, the assumptions we've used in water and sewer are numbers they gave us last spring, which I'm sure they'll update. Their system-wide numbers for both water and sewer are four point six percent for next year for FY fourteen. I'll get into that a little bit also. Clearly, the Reading numbers will be different, but we just don't know yet. We don't have any information. We don't normally even see a picture of that. I'm going to say until just before town meeting at best. So, we just have to do the best we can. We probably won't have an updated number for you at the rate here, which I think you've set for, is it March, Pete, or early April? For the water and sewer rates, I can't remember. But it's, it's before town meetings. Yeah. I don't know that we're going to have better information by then. But as what has happened in past years, we just adjust the budget. Normally, it's okay. It's, it's normally within a certain range. The increase in the debt service, which is driven by these water main projects, I'll get into. But this budget contains it because we dropped capital. So, to discuss the water main projects, just to sort of give you a quick backdrop. The twenty-five million dollar figure you heard was correct for the water main costs if we did them all today. There's two factors you have to add in. One is, in the last several years at least, we've also done paving costs as part of the water budget for a project that required paving. So, staff has looked through the individual projects and added paving costs where needed, not always. And the other thing is that obviously if we're not doing all this work in the first year, we have to add some kind of inflation. And, you know, I've got way more planning here than anyone would want. I had a hundred years at one point. But we've used four percent a year at the suggestion of the consultant. So, when a project starts ten years, we're looking at four percent a year times ten years times today's cost as the future cost. So, what that shows you is for the twenty-five million dollars of water main projects, as they are proposed to start in this plan, it's almost forty million dollars of those years' costs, if you will. More importantly is, is what we're doing in the short run. There's several phases. Phase A one is a six million dollar start that we should be able to do next year. The work would begin as soon as this summer if approved. Phase A one has a couple of parts to it. One of them is related very closely to that downtown two project. So, we're going to probably ask for town meeting to authorize six million, but we won't go up and spend six million because a chunk of that, I think it's around a million, is for a specific part of work that we may not want to start right away. So, we may not want to, or we may not want to sell the debt right away. We may use that as, you know, some negotiating leverage with the state in terms of the downtown two project, in terms of our contribution. There's another phase of the twenty-five million that we'd like to set aside, if you will, and use it as MWRA negotiations. And there's a lot more information that I don't really plan to go over, but it's in your packet in terms of which exact water mains. And that starts on page, looks like maybe thirteen or fourteen in your packet. There's a table that says Reading Capital Improvements Program, Water Main Phase A one improvements.
That's thirteen, right?
And that's a list. There's the six million I mentioned, for instance. On the next page is this MWRA negotiation set, set of work. And that's something that is not currently priced as part of the capital plan. This reading hopefully isn't going to pay for it. And you can see broken down some other phases.
Bob, you said four percent, that says three?
I'm sorry, I meant three, yeah. Initially, I had put four and the consultant actually corrected me down to three.
And that's three percent average over ten years?
Over forever.
Forever, yeah.
Yeah. So, what this capital plan in front of you does, for what it's worth, is it begins, in theory, all the work that has been identified by fiscal twenty-nine. So, you know, obviously, things will change and this won't really work this way. But as a planning tool, you can get this work done, you know, over a twenty-five-ish year period, twenty-five to thirty. Ideally, when the report was handed out, I think the consultant said if you do that work over twenty-five to fifty years, you're in good shape, really good shape. Fifty is probably not terrible. So, as with any planning device, you plan it and then all sorts of unexpected things happen and you delay and defer and adjust as you need. But this just gives you a sense of, again, depending on what the MWRA charges, and they have a four-year forecast, which we've incorporated in here. We can sort of engineer, if you will, water rates to about the five and a half percent area and do this kind of capital planning, given all the other information we have. If you want to do less than five and a half, then this, this, for instance, has to be stretched out. So, the tools you have are how fast you do your capital. And this, really, the other wild card, kind of like health insurance and state aid, is what is the MWRA going to charge? And what they indicated a year ago was going forward, beginning in FY fourteen, the rates would go up. Whether they still will say that or whether they've got other contingency plans, I don't know. But last year, they said start planning for roughly an eight percent long-term increase. But they gave a more specific forecast that's, that's in your documents of something like four point six, eight point eight and so on over the immediate few years. So, you know, you're going to have to remain very flexible because the MWRA's costs will change and we'll have to adjust our capital planning to help offset the rates that that would cause. But the last tool you have is reserves. So, you're going to have to kind of use all of those in concert. And on the very last page, you hand out, yep?
I'm sorry, I didn't.
No, go ahead.
I guess, anybody looking at this is going to be, I think, a little confused by this spreadsheet on page seventeen. Or at least I'm very confused.
What does it say on the top? Because I'm not sure I have.
Okay. This is where you're showing Reading Phase One, Phase Two, Phase Three, Phase Four, Five, Six and Seven.
Yep.
And you're showing them as part of the capital plan. And I think what you're showing is estimated project cost with the inflation factor?
Yeah, I'll just go over it quickly. On the very, really, all you need to do is, is look at the top half. Principal and interest are of no particular interest to anyone. The phase in the consultant's report is identified in that column where it says, for instance, A one, TBAA two. We've broken up what the consultant suggested, partly for financial purposes and partly for engineering purposes, and call them different things up to Reading Phase Seven. That Phase One is the six million, right now, it's identified as a six million dollar cost, more or less. We've, we've, I believe we can begin that work in FY fourteen and there's that six million and fifty thousand dollar cost. The next phase doesn't begin at all, so it's kind of a moot point. The one after that, in today's dollars, is a one point two oh two, three six oh cost, and that includes paving. If you go to the right, that escalates it by three percent a year forward and we can afford to start that project in FY eighteen. And in FY eighteen, that cost would have grown to just over one point four million.
Yeah. So, without you visiting every town meeting member?
Well, this wasn't going to town meeting, don't worry. This is only for tonight.
But I think what would make that, what would make that chart clearer is actually not to have the numbers for FY two thousand and thirteen through two thousand and seventeen and just put the number where you.
Don't show that to anybody but us.
Actually, FinCon would like this.
So, the other thing, I don't think Bob mentioned, is that I went into the MWRA board last week and they did approve advanced funding or zero percent interest loans. So, we have about a billion and a half dollars in the bank, which means we have two and a half billion dollars coming to us at five hundred thousand dollars a year over the next five years. So, what they've said is we can have all of that now at zero percent interest. So, that's part of what makes us able to do that six million dollar project because two-thirds of it, we're doing zero percent interest funding.
Yeah, that's great. But I just, and again, my memory may be fading on me a little bit, but I think what I agree too was the first phase here, the six million dollar phase, right? And, you know, sort of the rest of the stuff, the board still has to kind of figure out.
Right, and this is a planning document to give you an idea of if you went in this, you know, in this order, here's what you can do and when you can do it.
Yeah, because I'm not really in love with the five and a half percent forever increase number either, so.
The rest of the water capital plan, you know.
But the other thing is for the first phase, which I think you all understood, is from the consultant, from engineering and our, from a water books perspective, those are the highest priority projects that will give us the biggest bang for the buck, particularly in terms of the water quality issues. Right, George?
Yes.
Wasn't there a view that A one actually cured the water quality issues? The prime, the prime of the water quality?
Well, it, it targets the most critical area. If there was, if we could only spend that amount, then that's the least amount that they were recommending to spend. I mean, they all, they all contribute to the water quality, but that, that really targets where the most critical area was to try to boost that up, that area up to at least keep us out of trouble.
I'll come back to more of a sort of rate discussion. I'll just go through the other two budgets and then we'll kind of circle back. Sewer is a little bit simpler, I guess. There is some juggling of capital. Last year, we were in FY twelve, we had a seventy-five thousand dollar Lewis Street project. That's been deferred and two other streets have been added in. Lewis, Howard and Charles are now all proposed as a lump of four hundred and sixty thousand in FY fourteen. Because that's a larger amount than had been previously planned, some of the other things were moved out. So, if you recall, I believe there's twelve sewer station rehab projects that are necessary. Order of magnitude, that was about a five million dollar cost in today's dollars. And again, that's been capital planned over the next, say, fifteen years at this point. That's in the priority order of projects and pretty much the financing can accommodate that. So, the only real change in sewer is a larger three-street project being put forward in FY fourteen and some of the other work being pushed out for one or two years. Stormwater is the simplest of all. It, it keeps the forty-dollar fee per residential household. It pushes out those two large river projects to allow for, again, a fuller discussion. At one point and for a couple of years, one of the river projects had been planned on sooner and funded sooner in, in design and then in project. After discussion with staff and knowing the board's, you know, need for more wide community discussion, we pushed all the projects further out and put the funding for each of them first. of them first. So you'll get an idea of the total cost of both projects before you actually start to work on any of the one. That seems more logical. But in any case, that funding is still several years out. With the current reserves in stormwater, the $40 fee should be fine. Now we'll get into just a quick discussion that'll be updated when you have your rate hearing, but just, again, just give you an overview of how reserves look and what rates might look like. This is a use of reserves or balances of reserves over the last several years. The blue line is water. Water was specifically engineered to a higher level back several years ago because of the treatment plant decision. We knew a lot of that money would be needed to help offset some of the rate increase around that decision and it has been. Here's specifically the MWRA forecast from a year ago, which I mentioned's beginning at 4.6. Much like in the general fund, all this work assumes no regeneration of free cash or reserves in this case. When we ran our water treatment plant, without getting into the complexities, there was a much more likelihood of generating reserves then than there are now, for the simple reason that water was almost free at the increment when you had a treatment plant, whereas now you're paying the MWRA a good amount of money for the extra gallon of water that you use. So while no regeneration is assumed, and it certainly will be, it's not going to be a huge amount. On the right-hand side, you can see the combined water and sewer rates over time. The board was able to keep rates pretty low for three years while we had particularly difficult times. Last year, we couldn't, and that was, again, driven largely by usage. Usage was, you know, about 9 percent of that 14 combined. Looking forward, again, with capital as presented, which is a bit aggressive, and with the water reserve pattern that you see suggested above, you know, you're looking at, again, four years of approximately 5 and 1/2 percent. This assumes no change in water usage, which is pretty consistent to the numbers Jane showed me, but in the back of all our minds, we have to, you know, keep in the fact that conservation is still an ongoing thing, that no one five years ago could have predicted that Redding would be using the amount of water it's using, considering all the new growth we've had, we're using far less. So that you, again, have to keep that in the back of your mind, that every five to 10 years, or, you know, hopefully, more quietly, more often, you're going to have to adjust for that in prices. So if the board would prefer to, if you will, set a target rate, whether it's over a long time or after a few years, you know, we could have a better discussion about what you can afford to do. But I'll just caution you that the MWRA, you know, rate is the big wild card. And much like in health insurance, we can offset that with a greater use of reserves, if you wish, so that when we budget 4.6 for water and it comes in at 10, for instance, we can absorb that change in reserves, not in rates. But that obviously uses up your reserves for the future. You can't absorb, you know, a rate increase in the future.
But wouldn't we regenerate in reserves this last just year?
Can you remember at town meeting, we transferred in, I think, 200,000 each in water and sewer because we thought we had a revenue deficit? It turns out that we didn't need to do that, or at least not quite as much as that. Some of the regeneration, though, isn't fair because it's projects that weren't done. So when you don't do the $75,000 Lewis Street project, you can't really count that as regeneration. So I'd say it's on the order of only a couple hundred thousand at best.
Does MWRA give you any visibility out far, like in three or four years?
No.
Do they have any major capital projects that they've got?
They've got a significant amount of major capital projects that they've deferred, so...
You know, that number's not going to drop in our...
You know, unless they get outside funding, which they used to have from the state in the budget process, then it seems like they're going to have to pass along, you know, reasonably higher costs than they have in the last few years at least.
One thing that's frustrating about this, it's so hard to explain to people. I mean, you get it just from the math, but it's so hard to explain to people, like conservation apparently costs you so much more money. It's such an ugly conversation. I mean, there's no way to leave that with a good, warm feeling. And this doesn't make me feel any better about it, right?
No, I think, I think the thing that, you know, we're trying to do, particularly with a lot of this capital, is that obviously, a water and sewer system is very capital intense and, you know, it's sort of that invisible investment, literally, you can't see it, it's in the ground, and you don't notice it until it doesn't work. But when it doesn't work, you really don't want to be anywhere around. So, you know, I mean...
These things are expensive to operate.
And they're expensive to have, but can you imagine Redding without a good public water supply and distribution system or a good sewer collection system?
No, I get the capital thought. It's the usage thing that drives me nuts. And one, have we ever given any thoughts to a flat? I know this is overly simplistic.
You know, when we had this issue, obviously, a year ago, and we had about 99 percent of the people in Redding asked the collectors what was going on. You're right, it's just, it's intuitively not obvious. And then when you understand why, you just get mad. So I use less water, so you charge me more for it? And the answer is yes.
So why do you just fly rates usage?
Because, for instance, we have debt service to pay. So if you all use half the amount of water that we thought you'd use, you have to pay double, just to pay the debt service.
I'm making this up. If you pay $10, whether you use a drop or an ocean...
Doesn't promote conservation, though, when it actually costs people to use more water.
I guess, but conservation has a counterintuitive effect, which you're seeing here, so I mean...
Yeah. The fly rate would do the same thing, though, because if all of a sudden everyone can use whatever water they want and you charge the same fee, their, your usage is going to go up higher and that means your fee here...
Then do a hybrid.
From MWRA's...
I get it. Then don't do a continuum, do a hybrid where you've got kind of a low rate, a medium rate, a high rate, and then the disincentive is to bounce up to the next level.
But see, here's the tricky part. There actually is a financial incentive for us to conserve, because what we got caught was in this mid-year thing, because we have to guess every year how much water folks in town will use. And if they'll use that much, then we have to come up with extra cash somehow, right? But then for the next year, the MWRA bases our rate on how we did, basically, against the prior year. If we conserve more water than everybody else in the MWRA system, our long-term rates are going to go down.
Right.
So we've got to outpace, outaccelerate the rest in order to gain any ground.
And the problem that we have is that our per capita water usage is the lowest in the MWR system by far. So to be able to incrementally save that extra water, conserve that extra water is really tough.
But see, here's the, but if people start using more and we go up, then our, not only would we be buying more water, but we're going to buy more water at higher rates.
It's a perpetual motion machine.
I was following the MWRA budget because it's like 68 percent of the budget is debt service. Right now, they've got, I think it says $6 billion outstanding debt. The deadline for next year is $285 million. That's, I mean, it's just, it's all coming due. They've been postponing and refinancing it.
Well, but they are restructuring, just as Bob's restructured a lot of our debt and called debt and resold debts. They're, I mean, I just sat in on the board meeting for the morning, but that's part of what they were talking about doing and they continue to do that with some pretty substantial savings. But the other thing they are talking about doing, Bob, is they're talking about doing a modified projection to see what they can do in terms of bringing the rates down, because they're very concerned also that, you know, the, this sort of rate sticker shock is there.
Yeah, I'm trying to think of ways that we can smooth it out, but, you know, because we do have reserves and we have very healthy reserves, so it could be a way. But, you know, again, because your reserves aren't replenishing themselves, that's a short-term fix to the long-term situation.
I mean, we've assumed that they're not replenishing themselves at all, they're replenishing themselves some, so maybe to tweak that a little bit and get a little bit better idea of the replenishment.
I'm getting blank looks on the face of my colleagues. What, you're done?
Before the blank look.
Excellent. Now, before we run out the door, what's our follow-up process going to be on the budget this year?
I have a slide here. I don't know that we've handed this out to you yet, but this was kind of the food for thought going into the rest of the budget process. Rather than give you things to cut because that's too depressing, we gave you things to add back to the budget. So we're imagining that all this money is going to appear in the next few weeks. And here are some of the lists of the town manager's choice of things to add back. I'll make sure you all get an electronic and a hard copy of this.
So what we'd like you to do is submit that back to us. We'll do a spreadsheet that shows where the, where the board is in terms of the priority of any add backs that we were able to do and then present a bunch of these.
By that, you mean an amount of money that we...
Amount and priorities, with the priority...
Are you going to force the priority by giving us, say, five out of the, are you wanting to force the priority?
Well, we never get the board to be able to do the same thing the same way, so what we'll, the number does make sense because they're obviously different projects. I mean, there's something there for $1,000 and something there for $20,000 probably, but we'll try, we'll try to give you some guidelines, Sean, that make it consistent.
We probably won't be, have a good handle until the second week of February as to what course we're taking. There is a financial forum tentatively scheduled for the second Wednesday. I don't remember the date. It's around the 13th. If health insurance and state aid comes within reasonable areas that we've already budgeted, FinCom won't meet. But if they don't, and the school committee votes a budget as it's currently being presented to them that's well over the recommendation, FinCom wants to have a discussion before the town manager's budget's finalized as to what to do. So if, for instance, state aid comes in higher, and it probably will because this proposal for new taxes, so there's certainly some question as to what to use. And if health insurance comes in below what we budgeted, and I hope it does, then FinCom believes there's room for a discussion at least about what should we do with expenses. So that's why I wanted you, you know, to have some background for that. If we do find we have money to spend, you know, we need to know what to do. If it goes the other direction, I'm not terribly well-prepared for that and I'll have to think about that in the next two weeks. Our conservative numbers on state aid and health insurance just seem to hopefully tell me that's just not necessary, but anything can happen.
I'm sorry, Bob, our conservative numbers tell you...
That I don't think you're going to be needing to cut the budgets you've been presenting in the general fund.
And then our schedule is, we're not meeting next week because we have town meeting?
Correct.
Your schedule...
Cheers from the peanut gallery.
Your meeting on February 12th is your next meeting. And we do have the Biolog Committee coming in to discuss that. We're going to do a preview of the annual town meeting warrant and so forth. And then you meet on the 26th. And then first part of March, let's see, I think, March, actually, this doesn't reflect the latest. Steve wanted you to meet on March 5th and March 12th to interview candidates for town manager's position.
So James and I will get back to it. We have a meeting tomorrow night with the committee.
Okay.
We'll run that by him and see.
Good.
Yeah, I think...
And your hearing on water and sewer rates is April 9th, so that will be with the newly constituted board.
Our last meeting in March with this existing board...
Last meeting scheduled in March is the 19th, because the 25th and 26th is Passover.
Perfect.
So I think Steve's anticipation, depending on how the screening committee goes, that the 5th and 12th, he would interview town manager candidates into an appointment on
But we also have the option of coming back to you guys with alternative data arrangements.
Yeah. Because, like, we could look at Sanders and... Do we need to go through these other motions or...
Yeah, the other town meeting warrant and stuff.
Yeah, Bob, is there anything you would point out to the board on the other warrant articles?
No, I don't think so.
Bus shelter, do you want to endorse that?
Yes.
Thank you, guys. George, Jeff, Kay, we really appreciate you hanging in here this late.
Yeah, we're going to stay there.
So the bus shelter is Article 8?
Did that Laura Slackman recommend a subject matter of Article 8 of January 28, 2013, special town meeting?
We moved in seconds. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. All is in favor, 4-0. Is there anything else you want us to...
No, I think the other, the only other one was on Pearl Street and you understood what that was, so...
Yeah, nobody's going to ask. Are we okay, man?
What was the outcome of Pearl Street, the property, the northerly property in Pearl Street?
Northerly owners are not interested at all, so the town meeting action we requested is to take entirety of old Pearl Street by eminent domain and then to basically authorize the conveyance of the property to the South Side, both the right-of-way of old Pearl Street plus the other parcel.
In the act of merging the eminent domain fraction with the little corner, that's it for another day.
That's, the, the, the bodies are not interested in it, they rely on it for their access, so...
Great. Can I have a motion?
Move to adjourn. All right. 10:58. Second.
Second. All's in favor? 4-0? You're in favor of adjournment, right, Kay?
Yes.
Good night, folks. See you soon.
Fascinating.